Good evening. Can I get a motion to recommit in the regular meeting of the Proviso Township High School's Board of Education meeting?
So, move on.
So. Thank you, please go.
Mr. Alexander, absent, Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Valteras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbourham?
Aye.
Motion carried, we are in open session at seven fifty, seven p.m.
Thank you, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Barbourham, please read the decision statement.
Through expectations of excellence and by providing equitable educational opportunities to empower each student, our graduates are prepared for college careers and to serve as contributing members of a dynamic global society.
Thank you. At this time, the Board of Education opens the floor for public comment. The Board will receive public comment from any individuals present this evening who have submitted a request to address the Board for the established procedures. Comments will be limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy two, two thirty. We believe that all participants in the meeting desire the best outcomes for our students, families, and communities. As a reminder, this meeting is being livestreamed and will also be archived and available on the district website.
First is Jack Givens.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. At your latest meeting, the Board, you approved my resignation. I am here today to ask you to rescind that resignation. My decision to resign followed an April eighth email in which I was told that I would be terminated if I did not resign, only hours after receiving the email. I would not have resigned had I known how the Board meeting was going to go, that teachers would later be permitted to retain their positions. I strongly desire to remain here at Proviso Math and Science. I've built strong relationships with both students and staff, and I believe I can continue to be an asset to them here at PMSA. I pursued this issue with both my union representation as well as human resources, and they have both advised me that only you, the Board, are able to rescind and reverse my hasty decision to submit my resignation. I hope that you can recognize how my situation would be different had I known the suggestions for termination would not be approved by you, the Board. I sincerely wish to stay here at PMSA. I ask that you, the Board, reverse your decision allowing me to rescind my resignation and continue teaching here at Proviso. Do you need any additional information? I look forward to any additional dialogue, and thank you.
Mayor Lieutenant Thompson?
Good evening, Board of Education. Mayor Sopico, Mayor Harvey, in and absent of Mayor Booker from Maywood. Imagine if every taxpayer participated in our Board meetings on behalf of our students. While many students in District Two oh nine may not have parents who are property taxpayers, what unites both parents and taxpayers is the shared goal of ensuring our students receive a quality public education that is in a safe learning environment. Tonight, I want to address two concerns. Firstly, regarding the hiring of the superintendent of this district. I was informed by the Board President that it would be discussed at the April twenty-third Board meeting, which is tonight. However, it's not on agenda for discussion or approval. I support the Board members who have put as accountability and transparency to the community, and tonight I'm asking why there isn't like. Secondly, as the Advisory Chairwoman for R three has restored, reinvest, renew, grant facilitated by PLCCA, we are working with numerous parties to support District Two oh nine with positive outcomes. We've been conducting listening sessions for Proviso West and East, engaging with administrators and key staff to better support them. I am pleased to announce that our first step is acknowledging the hard work of teachers and providing support. Bishop Porter, PLCCA, Board of Directors, and R three Advisory Committee, which includes Mayor Booker and Mayor Harvey and myself, have allocated a thousand dollars to support teachers at Proviso West through a teacher appreciation week in Maine. R three is an extension of the school family, and we want to deliver real results and real outcomes that will create a space where vulnerability shows up for the students, their families, and the teachers and staff. We will meet with the leadership team at Proviso East on Thursday, April twenty-fourth, and I plan on coming back to this Board to say what's taking place at Proviso East on how we will support that school. We here, we are here to partner with the schools, not dictate operations, but to provide tools and resources that impact student behavior and achievement. It's essential for us to adapt to the changing landscape with millennials and Gen Z, Generation Z, who are now educators. We must pivot and prioritize the needs of our children and taxpayers rather than engaging in politics at their expense. Although I may not have children enrolled in the feeder schools or high schools, I am deeply committed to ensuring that every child receives a safe and high-quality education. That's why I would advocate for the hundred and eighty-one young scholars from Broadview and others across our communities. Holding the decision-makers of this district accountable even in challenging circumstances is crucial. We're all valuable, striving to make the best decisions during our tenure. I appreciate your dedication, I want to remind everyone that you are setting the tone for our district's progress. Our attention isn't the only thing that's at stake. The students are watching too, let's lead by example, thank you.
Mayor Andrew Harvey?
Good evening, Board. Madam President and Board members, Andre Harvey, Village of Maywood. And I just want to talk briefly about the superintendent hiring process. But first, before I do it, I want to acknowledge Mayor Ron Sopico from Merrill's Park, nineteen seventy graduate of Proviso East. I want to acknowledge myself, a nineteen eighty-one graduate of Proviso West, and Mayor Booker, who, the baby of the bunch, a nineteen ninety-something graduate of Proviso. We are here because during the superintendent search, we were just blown away that there was a community participation portion in the hiring process, and we embraced that. But after the process, it appeared that what the community wanted was not really listened to. What we want from the mayors and Proviso Township is we want transparency. We want to be part of the process. As Mayor Thompson said, we don't want to be here to tell you how to do your job. And sometimes we purposely don't come to Board meetings because we don't want the attention to be on us. We want the attention to be on you. We want you to be able to do your job because I know it's not an easy job to sit there and do your job. But we want to be part of the process, we embrace being part of the process, and we just want the process to be fair and transparent. Because one thing about the mayors in Proviso Township, we're all about the kids. And we want to make sure that you're all about the kids. Thank you.
Good evening, Board, families, administrators. I just want to take one second to thank the mayors. Mayor Thompson, Mayor Sopico, Mayor Booker, who's not here because he's out of town, Mayor Harvey. As a taxpayer, I'm really thankful to my mayors for coming out and supporting our students. I think it's really important when we talk about partnerships and collaborating. And so I just want to take the opportunity to thank all of them for really caring about what happens with our students and what happens with our communities, because we all know that our schools affect our tax, our, they affect our ability to sell our properties, right? And we want to attract young families into our community, and we can only do that if we have good schools. So I want to thank the mayors for wanting to collaborate and working with you, the school board, as we all work to have a great District Two oh nine, thank you.
Governor Tavares?
I'll go with again.
I'm sorry?
I'll go with again.
I already started your time.
How do you start the time when you go ahead? I'll go with again, I'll go with again.
Jerome David?
Good evening to the Board, good evening, Madam President, good evening, Mr. Vice President, to Madam Secretary. Good evening to my mentor, Mayor Thompson, and to the fellow mayors and Village Administrator Jones. I came up here tonight to apologize for my behavior and for the dialect and how I spoke to this Board. I realize that a good leader takes accountability for bad decisions. I made a bad decision when I decided to use profanity in conveying my message. I do not lead in toxicity, I do not lead in aggression, and I do not lead with profanity. I lead with an openness for unity and with the open mind that we're gonna have some trouble right now, but better days are to come. And so I apologize to this Board on behalf of my roundtable that I lead, because that is not the image that we provide to any of Proviso scholars. My message still stands the same. We are not the District of rejection, we are the District of excellence, and nothing but the best. Thank you all, and have a good evening.
Anthony Wilson?
Hello, good evening. I come to see you guys as a parent and a Proviso West alumni. And I'm coming to you because my son, um, we all, we just transferred back into the district in November, and on March twenty-eighth of this year, he was approaching his classroom in a instance to be attacked by three young men whose names he did not know then, and two of the young men, he still does not know their names right now. And the way that the school has handled the discipline and the situation in a whole is really sad. As a parent, I have not received any information in regards to what happened, why it happened, who the young men are, what happened to the young men, none of that information was conveyed to me. I had to self-orchestrate two meetings myself where I went to the Proviso West and I spoke with the people who are over the disciplinary area there, and I was met with, "We can't discuss because of property laws, we can't discuss, we can't discuss, we can't discuss." Because of that, I looked for, he said, "Privacy law," I did not locate them. But I just wanted to speak with you guys because Proviso West, from the time that I graduated and into now, is just a complete first, what is it, one eighty for sixty, completely, completely different, whatever it is. But, um, I don't raise my son to be a troublemaker. He's standing here with me, I raised him to be a chaplain, I'm trying to teach him to be an entrepreneur. He has his own brand, I teach him to be a light amidst the darkness. So for him to be approached and attacked by three young men that he doesn't even know was crazy for us, okay? They said that it was something about a young lady, I don't know. There was no meeting conducted, I requested a parent meeting with all three of the parents. I haven't heard anything back about a meeting. There was, it was said at one point that there was no availability for the meeting, able to be gotten by other parents. But in my history of being a parent, when a school says, "We need to meet with you," I go to meet with the school. So I didn't understand how availability needs to be a thing. But I believe in Ms. Martinez's vision of loving on our children. I believe that our children do need love, but I believe that our children need tough love. I believe that there is too much standing for disrespect. I believe that some of the people who are put in positions to protect our children want to be their friends, and they are not called, they are not instituting the discipline policies as they should be. And I believe that that is very dangerous for our children. I believe that keeping us in the dark, also as parents, as victims, is also very dangerous. And I believe that because there's no resolution to this problem, that's also very dangerous. And that if that's how they are handling, handling all of the discipline problems at Proviso West, I see why things are going, but why they are going because there's no resolution.
Thank you. Nancy Harris?
Good evening, staff, how y'all doing today?
Good evening.
All right, I'm coming to you today because I want to get personal. The law is the law, do we all agree that there's no one above the law? Do we all agree that? With that being said, an agreement is an agreement, correct? So in two thousand and twenty-one, agreement between this Board District and Proviso Support Staff Council of the Western Urban Teaching Union, okay? That was signed, okay? Y'all should have a copy, don't y'all, y'all following along with this? Okay. I want you to see page two. I know y'all have anything, y'all shouldn't have anything to do with the union. What we do, I'm gonna show y'all somehow y'all been doing, okay? If you read section on page three, article four, I mean, article seven, of officers, it states how long the president, vice president, all officers should stay in the office, two years. It states that right there. It tells you that the president should be elected during evening, and vice president during afternoon. But after their first election, they must be tired for two years. And the reason why these bylaws are in effect, so you don't have a monopoly effect, okay? You don't have a monopoly effect, okay? This is what's been happening, it's happening now, with the negotiating team for our new contract. Now, if you look at the contract up here, and see who signed this contract, this same lady that negotiated a new contract. You go to page four, it says, "Ida Chester." She's the president, how could it be that you're the president now? If you acted in good faith, and even without field representative, union field representative, who should have had a election? Because you're supposed to represent the whole body. We all live under this umbrella of District Two oh nine. Now, here's the problem I have, okay? If you go to the next page, only got three minutes. District staff are being put on union documents. I mean, you guys are being responsible for stuff, y'all don't even know what you're responsible for, this is okay? Since when did you okay union stuff? This is our taxpayers' money. You got the documents, you can see the stamp where it says that. Not just that, this is the real thing. They have negotiations, right? Private negotiations, I understand, okay? They're doing, on the false pretenses as the president. But this one gets me, what would make us acting superintendent allow this? They have meetings at West and the A D office, we try to have this employee meeting so we can talk about our future, nothing else? It's denied over anything, any building in District Two oh nine. How is that allowed? What's the standard for them? So we asking that you stop all negotiations in good faith. In good faith, till we elect the proper negotiation team, new president, new vice president, new resident, okay?
Just say it with that, thank you.
Please, thank you.
Mary Ellen?
Good evening, Board. Board, my union sisters and brothers come to you today, and we come united. We are asking that this Board discontinue all negotiations with our former president, Ida Chester, her executive board and negotiation chief. Ida Chester has been, our union president has not been our union president since March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four per our bylaws, which they said a president can do only a two-year term. We are asking that this Board give us time to clean our house, just like you had the clean your horse. We want to, we want to work with you in good faith, but not, but not at the expense of doing illegally. We want to work with you and purge in our district of debris, but we must first clean our own home from top to bottom and restructuring our frames. We care about this Board. This is why, the reasons why we are trying to stop Ida Chester and her, Ida Chester and her field rep from doing what was done the last contract, which had a, she had a building representative sign in a secretary place, which is illegal. We have been, it's not, it's not binding. We've been walking on, we've been working on a false contract. I don't know if the same can happen to you. We asking you that you stop negotiations with her and her team, because even right now, you're in negotiation, there's no secretary. We haven't had one since twenty-twenty-two. So we asking you, Board, give us a chance to clean our house, so we can do the right thing and come together with you and be as one, one Proviso. Thank you.
Yanessa Ramirez? Mister or Mrs. Ramirez? Claudia Hernandez?
Hi, good evening, Board. I stand here today as a very concerned parent. After this past Thursday, April eighteen, my son suffered emotional, mental, and physical aggressions by the hands of the people that are supposed to make him feel safe. Since we became residents of Maywood, my son has been a victim of bullying, harassment, and not only from his peers, but also from the adults that are supposed to be his safe net. As he transitioned to high school, I thought to myself, it'll be better environment than ever in my life, I would have thought. That instead of sending my children to school to get a fair education, it would have been like sending them to the pit of pure evil. After this past Thursday, my son and I were beyond fearful of his safety. That just the thought of him stepping back to the school puts him back in a state of severe anxiety and stress because not only the principal, Mr. Hall, Mr. Seaggers, a police officer, and all the security guards and teachers, along with a handful of other adults involved in the incident, made him fear for his well-being to the point that no matter how much reassurances and promises I make him, that he will be okay, he will refuse to go back to school. It breaks him down emotionally and mentally. No children should be subjected to go to such dramatic episodes on a place where it's supposed to be their safe heaven. School distress upon bullying among peers and about, and across boards, consequences are strict. But until when will the bullying, harassment, mental and emotional abuse by the hands of adults and many other personnel be tolerated and punished to the full extent of the law? Not one, but many laws and children's rights were broken by the school personnel this past Thursday. Starting from keeping me blindsided of the current events as they were happening, the only reason I was aware was because my son texted me into panic, telling me he was being accused of pulling the fire alarm, and it wasn't true. Little after that, I had zero communication with my son, because it turns out Mr. Hall took my son on away, stating that he could be, he couldn't be trusted because he could be talking to other students. No one from the school staff called me in to inform me of the incident until Mr. Seaggers called me, as I was already pulling into the school parking lot in panic mode, because a whole hour and a half had passed without me knowing anything about my son. In a very prepotent tone, he directed himself to me, and he said he was calling to inform me that my son was retained because there was an incident, and that there was an ongoing investigation, and if he was involved, consequences were going to be served. That he was going to release him at dismissal time, and with no further explanation, he hung up the phone. No one in the school will help me find out anything about my son. It wasn't until close to four P M. that Mr. Seaggers came downstairs with my son, and he handed me his phone and his I D that he had in his possession. I asked to explain himself and explain to me with what authority he had my son retained, which is a minor. He had his belongings, he would not let him talk to me. And he literally just walked away and left me standing there talking to myself. I emailed all the staff, I emailed the teachers. This has to be said, because my son refused to go back to school, because even members of the security guards that are here in this building bullied my son that day. It's almost Wednesday, and I haven't heard anything from anybody, I want consequences.
Mr. Burish? Can you step on the hallway and give her contact information for me? Oh, got it, okay.
Thanks.
Ceyenne Sotelo? Sotito, I'm sorry if I'm saying that incorrectly. Can you say your name so I can?
Yeah, it's Ceyenne Sotelo, yeah, so, so.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, District Two oh nine Township Board members. My name is Ceyenne Sotelo, and I'm an undergrad at U S C with an education major, as well as a community organizer and activist. I recently spoke to congressional members at Washington, D.C. about transparency in Hispanic institutions and success for Hispanic and Latino students. And now I'm doing it here. You may be wondering why I'm choosing to speak to you today. And that's on transparency and resources for students in problems in higher education, but as well as middle school and high school education. Well, first and foremost, I am a sister. I am a sister to Juan Josué DiAngelo Ramirez, whom you just heard my mother speak about, who was forced, who has faced harassment at the hands of Proviso East high school staff and faculty, specifically the principal. My brother has faced many difficulties in transitioning to the high school learning environment at the hands of the educators who are supposed to be making a school a safe at the hands of the educators who are supposed to be making a school a safe place to learn. Under seven-twenty, in the Provosa Township High School District 209 manual, it states, "No person, including a school district employee or agent or student shall harass, intimidate, or bully a student on the basis of actual perceived, et cetera, perceived characteristics." I want to emphasize something. No person, including a district employee or agent. My brother recently experienced not only an invasion of privacy, but as well as his rights as a student. On Thursday, April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four. He was falsely accused of pulling the fire alarm, which had already been a daily to weekly occurrence already. Was pulled out of class by a security guard, led to the principal's office to be coerced into making a confession despite pleading innocent. His cellular device was taken, forced to speak without parental notification or presence. Despite the lines being crossed in this sense, let us not forget the threatening of arrest, fines, and invasive body searches, all the while ridiculing the children they were so forcibly trying to incriminate. An institution such as Proviso East, as of twenty-twenty-three, has a fifty-nine point seven to thirty-seven point five of Latino and Hispanic and Black student admission. In allowing, excuse me. In allowing their students to be policed in this way, as people of color, we should be aware of the systems in place that are already targeting us in this way. And to allow it in a place of learning is unacceptable. This is the type of behavior done and allowed by school admin and staff is only fueling the school prison pipeline stereotype of students of color, instead of setting them up for success and uplifting them. As a sister, I am hurt for my brother and the other children being harassed and bullied. But as a Latina educator, I'm extremely disappointed by those who come into this field to uplift the children of tomorrow, but are the very ones choosing to fail them. Not only has this unfortunately happened to him, but his academic resources have been repeatedly ignored. Just because a student's disability is not visible, that does not mean that he hasn't, that he doesn't have one. His I D P has been ignored, not referred to, and updated without a present, of guardian present. In concluding, if a paycheck is all that matters to someone who is your principal of Proviso East, then I suggest you employ someone who truly cares to execute their job with dignity and empathy while paying for them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to um say thank you. I'm excited to see our mayors of Proviso Township, three of them, Nate is out of town as you stated, and I'm here. It's great when you guys come out, so I want to take the opportunity to thank you. For our parents. And those of the parents that have students, I'm going to speak specifically of seniors that are failing. For we, this board, decided to uh change the fifty percent grading without giving a year's time, and and so there are many seniors that have failed. Parents, you've got to get involved in your child's education. You got to visit the schools. You definitely need to get over, if you have students at Proviso West, I am going to be transparent, it is total chaos. It's true. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I am very concerned as a city board member and as a community member. Someone that has been involved in the community for quite a amount of time. The things that are going on, it is just a matter of time before something really, really bad happens at Proviso West. We've got to do better. I'm not here to pick on anyone, I'm just talking about what I'm talking about, I'm dropping it, not going to push it, but we've got to do better. This has been a horrible year at Proviso West, and a parent called me tonight. In reference to our I V program, I, I think we should stop calling it I V. I don't think we have an I V program. I'm quite familiar with the I V program. I graduated all the way through I V for pre-K, all the way through high school, so I'm well aware of how I V work. And the way that we are accepting or not accepting kids in P M S A First Avenue and saying I'm going to put them in P M, uh Proviso East I V, Proviso West I V, there is no such thing. Because they got a name for it, but that's not what's happening. You have very few, ten students in one school, eleven, twelve, and another, that's not an I V program. Thank you.
Last call, your mayor?
Oh, that was my son.
Oh, okay. So we're good? Thank you. That can do with one more time?
Excuse me, coming in late, uh I'm Chairman Fred Hampton Junior, International Chairman of Black Panther Party Cubs. I get um missing pieces, but uh makes concern him. In fact, last public hearing, regards to discussion about um that that elephant in the room, I feel like talk about their race question, representing, representing our people. I won't, I won't open up this on purpose, but I'm going to say with this. This is twenty-five of the Black Panther Party. We believe in an education system that will give to our people the knowledge of self. If a man's, if a man slash woman does not have knowledge of himself, the position, the society, and the world, can he get a little chance to reach anything else? Ironically, I missed the last public comment hearing, I was uh literally protesting the juvenile prison in West Side Chicago, U S C. In regards to the treatment to the, the Black youth that they're subjected to. Amongst the, amongst the, amongst the issues, the force medicating them, the meetings, but also the therapists that are, that are for all the Black members are all white women. And some people say, well, does it make a difference on, you know, who, you know, who's the therapist for these children? I don't, I don't, I don't realize how the races, and that, 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 the question of race, is, is, is again, is that it's an elephant in the room I also wanted to talk about. It impacts us, it's not by coincidence, a lot of people in our community, they go to school, they only represent, represent this for Black, for Black, Black people, in particular, Black men in school, maybe they have a vagina to. It impacts us how we view ourselves, so again, I just want to make our position clear. It uh, this is something, a, a stereotype, the, the man of jury bond on Peters. This conversation impacts us in courtrooms, the schools, the media, the lack of representation for our, our people. Black communities, Black people are treated like the writing danger because of all races, and under version, no respect. So again, that, that, it's not some sort of abstract and social position we take about representation from, from, from Black community. I can do with that, thank you very much.
At this time, we will have a source of communication from our co-adjunct superintendents.
Hi, first off, we actually have Dr. Deborah Watson Hill, our C S B O. Heart Financial Office.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board Members. This evening, we have Baker Sully here, Nick Cabellier will share results from our F Y twenty-three audit. I will present them at this time.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I have a brief presentation. I understand that the board has received copies of the financial statements. Uh we concluded our audit and issued our reports on the district's financial statements. They were dated March twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-four. So the scope of the district's financial statement audit is fairly robust. We render assurances on the district's financial statements. The Illinois State Department of Education Annual Financial Report Form, the Consolidated Year-end Financial Report, which is a required filing with the Brand Accountability and Transparency Unit of the State of Illinois. Uh because the district expends over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal awards, you're required to have what they call a S I L O audit, which is a compliance and internal control audit of um certain major programs for federal award dollars. We will render a report on internal control over financial reporting and other matters based on an audit conducted in accordance with governmental auditing standards. And you know, the, the S I L O audit is, is fairly robust. Uh we looked at several programs, and I'll go over in detail the results of those procedures as well. So you can see that we're looking at a lot of things when we conduct the financial statement audit. After performing all of our procedures, our responsibility is to render an opinion on those financial statements. And then, of course, there's other documents that speak to compliance and internal control related matters. Uh the type of opinion that we render on your financial statements is an unmodified audit opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that you can receive from the external auditor that your financial statements prepare in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And having scope limitations in our abilities to perform our audit procedures. Uh and based upon the results of those audit results, our opinion is that, that things weren't good where in the financial statements as presented. Uh we also render opinions on the Illinois State Department of Education's Annual Financial Report, the Consolidated Year-end Financial Report, and the Schedule of Exposures of Federal Awards as well. All of those receive unmodified opinions. So this is extremely hard to see if you're in the back of the room. Uh if you have the booklets with you, these are actually pages nine and ten of the financial statements themselves. So if you have books with you, uh it's going to be the one that has um this turquoise looking spiral on the front. This is your financial statements. And I, and if you want to turn to those pages, if you can't see on the screen, uh I can give a moment for everyone to get there. But this is one of the schedules in the financial statements that I always like to go over with boards, because it presents the income statement for the results that took place during the fiscal year. Uh the general fund for reporting purposes consists of your education fund, your working cash fund, and your tour immunity at house. For us, when we're reporting those three funds, they have to be consolidated together into a, a general fund. For all intents and purposes, though, for this discussion, think of the general fund being primarily represented by your head fund, which is your primary operating fund for managing the day-to-day operations for educating students in the school district. Your operations and maintenance fund is used to manage the day-to-day um costs of running the district. There's also some significant capital outlay costs that were allocated to that fund during fiscal year twenty-three. Transportation fund is used for transporting students to and from school. Municipal Retirement Social Security Fund is used for paying pension-related costs, Social Security, Medicare. Debt service fund being utilized for um costs associated with paying back bonds that are outstanding and matters relating to leases. Capital Projects Fund is a fund that has a significant amount of activity. This is based upon um the district's master facility plan, the execution of those costs throughout fiscal year twenty-three. And then the Fire Prevention and Life Safety Fund is a fund that's highly restricted in the sense that only costs can be allocated there that are on approved ten-year life safety plans that are filed with the state board institution. So looking at from the left side of the page and the right side of the page, uh I like to think of page nine as being your, your day-to-day operational funds. You can see that your general fund, about three-quarters of the way up the bottom, generated a, a income or surplus of about thirteen point eight million dollars. So your general fund trended in a manner that was um an increase in fund reserves at the end of the year. There are also minor transfers that took place during the year, and they're predominantly related to the accounting for for payment on outstanding leases, which is required in the state board administrative rules. Uh but for the most part, your, your head fund trended very positively during the fiscal year. Uh the operations and maintenance fund did draw down and utilize fund reserves for approximately two point three million dollars. Uh that was predominantly driven, in my opinion, by the capital outlay costs that were allocated to that fund of about eight point six million dollars, which is the number that sort of represented right below um I should say above the, the, the first underline in the expenditure category. Transportation fund didn't utilize some fund reserves of about one point two million dollars. Uh the municipal retirement fund had a surplus of about seven hundred and twenty thousand. Debt service fund, for the most part, was pretty much break even. Capital Projects Fund does need a little bit of a discussion, there was a decrease in that fund balance of about twenty-two point five million dollars. Um and the fund actually ended the year in a deficit of thirteen point seven million dollars. So what does that mean? That means that the expenditures they were paying out of the Capital Projects Fund were not um there wasn't enough fund reserves to cover that. And a lot of that had to do with the timing of moving dollars to the Capital Projects Fund to cover those costs. So at the start, I would say at the start of fiscal year twenty-four, there was a significant backlog of, of payments to the construction vendors, the architects, for the work that was being performed in your buildings. And as a result of that, it generated a significant amount of accounts payable and retainage payable for the work that was progressing. Those amounts exceeded your fund reserves at the end of the fiscal year. So I'm going to just pause right there to see if there's any questions. I do have some more information to share on the Capital Projects Fund on the next slide, but uh this is a pretty important set of financial results, and I would welcome the opportunity to talk any questions through on this particular schedule that the board may have at this time.
Yeah, those thirteen point seven million uh for the facilities. How, how far back do you track that from, from the conservation?
Sure, so our, our other procedures will consist of not only looking at the activity that was placed in the fund out of cash basis, so from July one of two thousand and twenty-two through June thirty of, of twenty-three, but then we also look at your dispersments that have occurred after the end of the fiscal year, several months. In addition to odds that weren't yet paid by the district, but are owed to vendors. So, so matters relating to retainage are usually held back until the end of the project is done. We will also pick up and accrue that particular liability. I don't have it on my slide, but if you actually turn two pages to the left, you'll get to the balance sheet of the district's financial statements on page six and page seven. And if you look at Capital Projects Fund, the very first line in the liabilities is nineteen point seven million dollars. That's the value of the liabilities that existed as of June thirty, twenty-three. The amounts that were owed to vendors and were not yet paid, a cash disbursement through June thirty, twenty-three. So nineteen point seven million dollars was owed at that point.
Right now, when you say the, the lack of transfer, you're talking about the four point five from the educational, or is that from?
Sure. Sure, so um there is a, the Capital Projects Fund really doesn't have a, a funding source. There's not a defined revenue, like a property tax that comes in. So um the Capital Projects Fund is funded in multiple areas. Uh if you're looking back on, on the slides and we go back to the income statement, the, the revenues in the Capital Projects Fund consisted of an allocation of, of state aid of about three point four million dollars. There was about nine point three million dollars of federal dollars that were used to cover the costs that were paid out of the Capital Projects Fund, that was your ester funding. Your ester funding was, was used to do a lot of that work. And then there was a nominal amount of investment in about twenty-three thousand dollars. The collective revenues that were recognized in fiscal year twenty-three were twelve point seven million dollars. Those were far less than the thirty-five point three million dollars of expenses that were incurred and, and recognized during that period. So you, you have a hole, how do you fix that hole? And, and really, it's going to be through a transfer of funds from one fund to the other, or an additional revenue source that you may reallocate over there. My general understanding was that this was going to be funded to some extent, and had actually been funded to some extent, um through a fund balance transfer from the head fund to the Capital Projects Fund. That transfer did not take place by the end of fiscal year twenty-three, and as a result, it's not represented in your financial statements.
Right, that's what I was referring to, the, the four point five that we originally allocated with the facilities master plan for, for whole forecasted facilities plan, which is a ten-year fund.
Yeah, I have, I have to plan my, my hat from back in the day, but there was kind of a plan to move four and a half million dollars over a year, but in that plan, there also wasn't ester funding, right? So there was a significant amount of ester funding that came from the federal government as a result of the pandemic, and things like H check work were primed to be used. So, so there was kind of, I don't want to say a shift in plans, that I want to speak for the board, but I will say that there was an infusion of those dollars that were probably present at the time that that four and a half million transfer was being discussed years ago.
Let me ask you this, so. So even though they didn't transfer those four point five, are we still in a good position of transfer was, what was not transferred and was originally cons- considered for that, for that? Well, I mean, it's not really the education, but it's really, that's, I mean, the education fund meaning everything, the whole operation to the whole school, right? Meaning, I'm sorry, teachers and.
So I can, I can speak to two years, because I've been your auditor for this year and last year. Uh and if my memory is appropriate, you know, I believe it was a nineteen million dollar surplus in the end fund in fiscal year twenty-two. And then now you also have a, an end fund surplus, I believe it's about thirteen point two million dollars. So the, the district has had significant surpluses in the past two years, and those dollars rested within the end fund. So your, your ending fund balance in your head fund is significantly higher than it's ever been at the district. So in a sense, it's, I don't want to say it was purposely safe, it's the reality of it. Your head fund position is significantly higher than it's ever been, and as a result of that, you now have the ability to potentially use those funds to fund your project or that you committed to.
What we owe you mean?
Because you already, you're already, you're already going to work that, right?
To cover that missing piece.
Yeah. So I mean, I'm just going to, I'm just going to answer the slide, and I'll come back to any questions on this. But this is a page from the capital projects fund budget actual. And there's a note in the financial statements that's required disclosure whenever you overspend your budget in a particular fund. So the capital projects fund had a budget of, I believe it was $19.9 million during the fiscal year. And the actual expenditures that were recognized were $35.2 million, ultimately turning into a overspend of budgeted amounts of about $15.4 million. Also, you did not have a sufficient fund reserve to cover those costs because you ended the year with a deficit of $13.7. This was fairly quickly identified as we started the audit in early August and started having conversations with Dr. Hill regarding this. And I understood that there was a $50 million budget that was in place in the fiscal year 24 budget. So subsequent year, $50 million moved from ed to capital projects. And tied donation to financial statements, they included a note for the reader and for the community to understand that this particular fund deficit right now was essentially covered to the extent of the $38 million that was transferred by the board in fiscal year 24. Now, you have a budget for $50 million. You so far approved movement of $38. There's still $12 million out there. You're still ongoing project work. It's very likely that you will still need to perform a second transfer before the end of this fiscal year so that you don't end the year with a negative cash position because your township school treasurer can't process your bills if you have no money in that particular fund. So one of the things, just, I mean, the financial statements are the financial statements, but also I'd like to share some forward-looking ideas. You will undoubtedly have to move more money over in fiscal year 24 before this year ends because you have a significant commitment still left on your facility work, and those bills are still being paid. Had some conversations with Dr. Hill about what that run-up potentially looks like. You may move the full 12. You may move something less than that. But you will be moving something before the end of the year. Otherwise, when July comes around, you won't be able to pay your bills again, just like you were at the start of this particular fiscal year.
Quick question. So what you're explaining to us in the public now is we are effectively funding the facilities master plan through the ed fund. We're not, we're no longer within the surplus money that we had set aside as a board to fund that. And therefore, my question is, how is that constant move going to affect our bottom line? Another part to that question, if you can handle it, you have a five-year budget. Where do we at in our five-year budget that we presented to the community, telling them what we would spend over the next five years?
Sure. I personally haven't seen the five-year budget, so I couldn't necessarily speak to that. What I would say is that, you know, going on my past experiences, that there was a plan, you know, when the FOP was here and before it dissolved, was to move $4.5 million a year from the ed fund into the capital projects fund. You also issued debt. Those debt proceeds were put into the capital projects fund. I think, you know, maybe one or two of those years after I left, there may have been a movement of the four, $4.5 million, and then other years that may not have meant a movement. If you're, if you're school district generating the surplus in those years and you didn't move the money, it's still kind of sitting there. So like, there's two ways of thinking about it. Did you, are you moving it all at once or were you moving it a little bit at a time? I think you're probably viewing it as you're moving it more all at once now than you had planned for those incremental moves. Looking back, collectively, how much did you transfer from operational surpluses, fund balance reserves, into the capital projects as part of the holistic plan? I don't have that answer necessarily. But I would say that the ester funding, I think it was in the tune of somewhere along $29 to $30 million was used for HVAC work. That's a significant additional revenue source that wasn't probably contemplated at the time that the original plan was built. So that's, in a sense, could have supplanted some of that need. I mean, plans continue to evolve. You know, you don't want to stay stagnant if additional revenue comes in and it's got a purpose that's restricted and you have that need. I would always recommend using it. But I wouldn't necessarily want to probably overreach and say, you know, did you move exactly what your plan was? Because I don't have that answer. All I can say is that at the end of this fiscal year, you were negative $13.7, $13.8 million. You since moved $38 million, and the bills are still coming in. So that $38 million that you moved over covered this deficit of $13.7, but you still have other expenses that are left to be paid in fiscal year 24 as those projects wind up.
So if I'm understanding what you're saying, the answer to my question is, we are generating through the facilities master plan more and more projects and bills that are having to be paid by the district's funds above the amount of the $4.5 that we allocated or said that we would use. So now, if we move forward, continue to move forward with projects, we're going to be removing money from the ed fund to pay for those unless we do another funding source?
I would say, moving forward, which is probably the best way for me to answer this question, is that moving forward, you should pause and get a really good understanding of what your operational, what your operational costs are. You have to understand, you know, from my perspective, it's my opinion of looking at your financial statements very objectively, is that there's been lots of movement in the past three to four years. Staffing, facilities, you know, all different kinds of changes, and things are starting to kind of settle in, back to maybe a norm, whatever it is, or new ideas on programs and operations. Where are those base-level costs going to cost the school district? Okay? Then where are our operational resources that we have? And then what's left after that? Because if your capital projects right now currently have been funded out of reserves or fund balance surpluses, accumulated surpluses in a sense. You also have bond and keep them, right? In many instances, significant facility improvements are done over a period of time. You will issue debt. You pay that debt off over a period of time. So, you know, is there an appropriate blend to go to moving forward? You've done a lot. You've done a tremendous amount with your original bond issuance, utilization of federal dollars, plus your accumulated surpluses. Now it's time to take a break and take a good look at everything and see where you can all add. That's my opinion. Are there any questions on this schedule before I continue on my presentation? Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So maybe a bit more for administration. Have we started to look at this? Because I know we've been talking about halting a lot of the work. I mean, not the current phase that has to get done because it's already in works, but have we been, Dr.?
Yes, we are having those conversations right now. We are waiting until June 30 to see what our financial condition is before we move forward with other projects. And we will be presenting a synopsis to the board on what that will probably entail.
Yeah. Because if I recall, one of the last pieces to the facilities master plan was the AC, and that's, it will be complete, LT, or is that being completed?
It'll be completed this summer at Proviso.
Right. So after that, it's really nothing that's an emergency except for foyer work that we're talking about. But yeah, okay. Yes, Rodney, you're absolutely, and we have to really take a look at, with this audit, take a look at what's going on and then, you know, kind of reevaluate the FMP along with the, maybe a foyer plan. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. So moving, moving forward, I'm going to talk a little bit about the results of the single audit. So the single audit is, you have these various programs that you operate that are federally funded. And the federal government says that those programs need to be audited annually by your external auditor to test the compliance of the utilization of those dollars in accordance with the uniform guidance rules that are established. In addition to that, we also test your internal controls that are present to ensure compliance over those particular award dollars. So it's a dual test in a sense. So we're rendering an opinion on your compliance with those dollars. And then we're also going to tell you if there's any conditions that, you know, could be room for improvement over internal controls. So the scope of the audit, there was about $15.6 million of federal awards that were expended by the district during the year. We were auditing three major programs. That's a lot of programs to audit. Historically, it's probably somewhere between one and two, usually around two, I believe, for the district. The education stabilization fund, which is the ester funding, was about $10.1 million of expenditures. The child nutrition cluster, which is your food service program, was $1.8 million of expenditures. And then the special ed cluster, also known as the IDEA program, was $1.1 million. So the collective amount of coverage of federal award dollars that were subject to our audit was about 83% required to have, it had been 40%, so we achieved that. And then our opinion on compliance for all three of those awards was an unmodified audit opinion. No compliance matters were identified and reported as a result of our audit procedures. And we also render a report on internal control over compliance. And no deficiencies in internal control were identified in reporting this material weakness. So a very good clean audit as it relates to the single audit. Good job. I was.
But you didn't say this.
We have a little tape?
Yeah.
Pretty sure I talked about, this is pretty much my same presentation with some.
A lot of numbers for us.
It is a lot of numbers, though. It's too many. So this is, so maybe this is the next part. This is maybe trying a little bit of a memory on it. So we perform an audit in accordance with governmental auditing standards. Under that particular framework, if we identify internal control risks over the preparation of the financial statements themselves, so the processes that are in place to generate this document, we will report those back to the governing body and to management for further consideration. The results of our audit have identified, to some extent, the same matters that were reported in the prior year. And I'll go a little bit into some detail, but there was a booklet, there's a second booklet that the board would have received, and that particular booklet has the glossy cover. And, you know, I'm not going to necessarily ask you to follow along with my presentation, but where some of the details on these matters starts on page six of that booklet. Because we're only going a little bit more detailed, but I'll just explain them to you right now. So the first one relates to material cash basis adjustments. So when we come in and perform the audit, the district provides us with their accounting records for the year on a cash basis. And as part of our service, we will bring you to what they call a GAP presentation. So we get a consideration to accrual adjustments and things that aren't in your day-to-day operations. But if we identify adjustments that are necessary for the things that you do on a daily basis, like your cash basis transactions, those are considered material audit adjustments. So we had a few of those this year, and they're somewhat similar to what was reported in the prior year. Without getting into the terrible minutia of it, one of them related to the allocation of corporate personal property replacement tax revenue. So much of that revenue source needs to go to your IRRF fund before it can be utilized for other purposes. We have a slight adjustment on that matter, which is similar to the prior year. The second one relates to, you were a part of the special education cooperative PACE. And as a result of that, you have a bond that PACE issued for roof work. And there's a separate special billing that they do specifically just to your school district for the principal interest cost on that bond. Everybody agreed to that at the time, because everybody knows that this payment is going to take place every year until the bond is paid out. That payment has to be paid out of your ed fund. And this year, in the second, it's the second year in a row that I audited, at least, it was paid directly out of the debt service fund initially. The debt service fund is only to be used for the district's debt, direct debt. That debt service fund is supported by a tax levy that is just on the district's direct and general obligation bonds that are outstanding. So if you use the debt service fund to pay your PACE bond, you're actually using your property tax levy inaccurately. So that's an adjustment that we made to move that back out and appropriately pay it out of the refund. And then the district also has a bond that's outstanding that is required to be funded by the O&M fund, and those dollars are put into the debt service fund. It's a qualified zone academy bond. So the debt service fund doesn't have a funding source to cover it. It has to come from an alternative means that's been the O&M fund. So we move those dollars over to make sure that the debt service fund wasn't being used inadvertently to cover a bond that wasn't being backed by the direct levy. So those are the three overarching adjusting entries. These are really the same types of adjusting entries that were around at the end of last year or two. The next matter is a repeat matter that relates to bank reconciliation procedures. So the school district is part of the Proviso Township School Treasurer's Office. The overwhelming majority of your cash and investments is required to be managed by that office under the statute. But the district has certain bank accounts that they manage in-house. All the student activity accounts and the money that kids collect and use for dispersments, those are maintained here at the district, and those should have an accounting system that's being used to track those balances. Those balances should be reconciled back to the bank accounts that are being used to manage those funds. That process did not take place during fiscal year 23. The process was already broken and has been for several years. I know that the district's going to have to put some significant effort behind getting that straightened out because the accounting records aren't being maintained constantly to make sure that it agrees to the actual bank accounts. Now, at some point in time, you're going to have to draw a line in the sand and say, okay, this is what we believe the activity account's balance should be. This is how much money we have in the bank. What's the difference? What are we going to do to remediate this so that we actually reconcile that we can move forward? My general understanding from looking at this, we have been on rapid to give you a clean audit opinion as we took the bank statements. I would like that the activity, how much was the deposits in the bank statements for 12 months? How much were the dispersments in the bank statements for 12 months? That's your revenues for your clubs. That's your expenditures for your clubs. But at some point, you should have a separate ancillary system to do all of that. You also have a self-insurance bank account. So you're self-insured for medical, and there's a separate bank account that there are district contributions placed into, employee contributions placed into. That entire bank account is maintained off of your balance sheet. None of your internal accounting records actually maintain a ledger that says this is what we deposited. This is what we paid. This is what we believe the ending balances. Essentially, the bank account is just monitored, you know, throughout the year. I think that at some point, the district should explore a process to have a system in place to manage all of that activity in a fund so that everybody has a great transparency and accountability over that particular account. And the last matter is relating to the IRRF pension actuarial down. So I'm going to just kind of expound on this a little bit, but the district participates in the pension system. Certain employees are part of the IRRF system. The district makes contributions. IRRF maintains how much employees were paid. And they calculate an actuarial valuation to determine the liability of that pension system. That liability is reported in your financial statements. One of the things that we do as auditors is we will test the census data. So we get a report from IRRF that says this is how much everybody was reported to us as having been paid. And then we look at the district's records to see if the two match. During our test, we tested 25 of these people to gain some assurances that the census data that was used for the valuation is appropriate for the valuation to be disclosed in your financial statements and recorded. And there were differences in the amounts that IRRF had versus the amounts that were in the district's payroll system. And I believe the general statement that I've included here, without, you know, listing names and exact amounts, discuss this with management, was there was approximately three employees who their service credit amounts could not be reconciled back to the district's internal records and contained variances of greater than $1,000. So that was a way to kind of inform the board and management regarding these differences that existed, at least on our test. You know, I've advised that, you know, there's, there's another process, another review to closely monitor the transmission of the data to IRRF back to the payroll records. This is something that kind of can get away from you if it's, you're looking at it at the end. It's monitor it as it's happening, and if there's any discrepancies, let's figure out what they are and remediate them real time. This is, these are essentially the opportunities for consideration and improvement as a result of our audit.
And what is the process that we have in place right now that includes the rest of it? So if we've got these 25 individuals plus three, and then it comes up without them, what's the process that we're using that allows for that?
Oh, it's somewhat complicated because there's two, there's two pension systems, but I'll give you another gist, okay? You run payroll out of your accounting system. That payroll system makes a report, a data file, that you then take and upload it to IRRF's portal. And then IRRF portal then accepts that data and validates it, okay? So the information, this is kind of a perplexed me, and quite honestly, we didn't really have a good feel for it yet, was why is it different? The person that was paid, the same file that was being used to pay the person is the same file that's being uploaded to IRRF. Why are there differences? So, you know, our scope is somewhat limited on this area. You know, we're testing for reasonableness in the census data. The census data is woefully inaccurate. Then there's a possibility that the pension liability could be woefully inaccurate. I didn't get to that point, but we did identify some discrepancies, and we thought it would be a good opportunity to take a deeper dive by management to see what was causing those issues and work with IRRF by asking, I don't know if IRRF's records were inaccurate. They just changed their system. So they, we were trying to get the report. It took an extra couple of weeks because we couldn't pull it down because they weren't in a state of change too. So, you know, everybody's changing stuff. TRS migrated their system. IRF migrated their system. TRS migrated their system, IRF migrated their system, so we're, has a little bumps along the way. Sure. Were there any questions on that particular aspect?
No, can I go back to the student activity accounts?
Sure.
Because that's, that's been an issue the last time and probably the time before that. What have we put in place? Because they apparently didn't put anything in place because we're back here again talking about the student activity fund. I do get a concern about that. Because many times there are sales fundraisers going on. And those mites, I don't know who did it. You know what I'm saying? I know it's the, where's the money for their clubs or whatever.
Yeah, not recorded cash transaction is almost impossible in fact unless somebody says, hey, you know what? We, we just did a car wash and we, I knew we did 500 bucks and I don't see it recorded in my report. Whereas, you know, right now you have a report that you can rely on to say, hey, there's that money that I just brought out of the business office. Each club sponsor would have an account that they would manage and then look at on a monthly basis. And then at that time, they, they have the ability to raise a flag and say, ah, something doesn't seem right here. You know, they, they're not getting that.
And that's what used to happen back before now. Each club, sorry, I was a cheerleader coach.
Sure.
The business office knew that I was doing a fundraiser from this date to this day. Business office was expecting money from that fundraiser on that last day. I think we have gotten away from that. Uh, we've been going to GoFundMe online, you can't do that. And so I think this is going to be very important that we go back to every club whenever you're having a fundraiser. There used to be a list, everybody knew who was selling cookies today, so, um, the dance team wouldn't sell cookies. But we have gotten away from that and, and there's money that comes through this district quite a bit that's not recorded and that I'm concerned about that.
So I can, I can point out the value of the money that we saw for the bank statements. So on this particular slide in the general fund, in the revenue category, there's a line, student activity, second from the bottom. There's 529,000 dollars that came in. I'm not saying that that's all cash, I'm just saying that's the value that went into the bank account as a deposit. And then there's a separate line that says student activity dispersments, which is 229,000 dollars. So there's a lot more confidential than this whole map, you know? And I think just from when I started working with the district, there was a software system. It was a very old system that wasn't even being supported by the vendor.
Blue Bear.
Blue Bear, I, I always call it Blue Bunny, I made it confused, or it's Blue Bear. And so Blue Bear wasn't being maintained and it really wasn't reliable. The, the accounting system we use called Intuit Visions has a module that could be acquired, but it has to have appropriate starting. You know, so I, I don't know if this is, you have to look at it from two different ways, like what's the worst case scenario and the best case scenario? Like right now, like what's being tracked in your club accounts is, in that Blue Bear system, although it's not necessarily complete, isn't, isn't more than what's in the bank accounts? Like the bank has to have more money than what's being tracked in the individual club accounts. I think at some point, what's going to have to happen is a list of all those clubs, you know, if we establish it. This is what we believe our best estimate is on these club positions ratified. This is everybody's starting point. More action, these are the club balances. And then from that day forward, we might have a, a surplus in that activity account. The board has the ability to decide what they want to do with those surplus dollars. Do you want to randomly allocate it to the clubs? Do you want to take it back into the district's, you know, debt fund? Those are all choices that you can make. At some point though, you have to eventually get the right starting point. Um, you're on here and able, is that starting point, you're probably having a fiscal year? Probably not. And there's all these bigger, quieter fires to be, to be put out, but you know, at some point, this is something that's going to have to take an extra effort to tackle it and get set up. So that really for the most part concludes my presentation this evening. We're not happy to take any other questions that you might have at this time. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Good evening. And so at this time, I want to discuss briefly that I am our authorized agent. Uh, right now I am asking the board to appoint me as the agent so I can continue to move forward with the work um, in reference to what our auditor just mentioned regarding I R F. So that will be an action item. Next, I wanted to discuss our business office update. And before I begin, I do want to address the student activity. We do have a plan in place to reconcile all those accounts. So right now, the business office is working on an Excel document that lists all the clubs by each school. We also connected with the township treasurer's office to begin the connection group for student activity. So Blue Bear is on its last leg and every day it is breaking down, that is a fact. With that being said, once we identify, uh, the date on which we will reconcile those accounts to see how much, uh, is in each activity, we will present it to the board and then all the activity will be transferred to I Visions. I Visions will set us up where there is, uh, actual reconciliation process that is taking place, where we can track every deposit, um, that comes in from the clubs. So that will assist us not only with student activities, it will also assist us with our self-fund account as well. Because right now, uh, with our bank BMO, all the deposit packages are being transferred into one account. Then it leaves that account and it sweeps into three different accounts, but we don't have a reconciliation process in place. And so once we move to I Visions and move to that connection group, student activity will be in itself standing alone. Um, and as budgeted, uh, the next update, as, uh, Nick Cavalier mentioned, uh, we had already started the process of moving the fund. The concentration was for us to focus on this year. Now we're moving to the summer projects for FY '24. So there will need to be an execute to remove, to transfer the remaining funds that were already approved by the board last fiscal year. Um, in reference to closing out the school year, we are having budget meetings with all departments right now. Um, and within those meetings, they have been going very well. Uh, we are asking departments to identify what their needs are, um, to make sure that everything is in place, uh, for our students when they do return to school on the first day. And last but not least, we're working with each department, um, right now, um, May and June to process all the purchase orders and invoices that are in this fiscal year because we want to minimize the amount of invoices rolled over into the current school year. So that is a goal that we're working on right now and we've started that process now. Are there any questions? That's all I have for today. Have a blessed evening.
Next, we have Mr. Swanson with our technology department.
Evening, board. Just a quick update here, uh, action item for your consideration is our 2024 summer IC internship. This would be the third year running this internship program. It's been great across the district, so bringing it forward today as a, um, action item, looking to continue this summer with hiring six current proviso students, um, that allows them to work across the district, um, this summer with our department. And it'll especially be beneficial this summer with, uh, summer school being at both east and west. So what we do is we rotate the kids from each school every couple of weeks. We have it on a schedule so they get to go all across the district, work with our department, work with students and staff. And it's an overall great opportunity. So just another, uh, an item for your consideration tonight. And that's all. Any questions?
All right, good evening, board. And, uh, thank you for everyone here. My name is Alexander Ashoff, one of the interim superintendents, uh, my co-interview, sitting beside me, Mr. Luke Provone. A couple of items here for our summer school update. Uh, so first, uh, just to talk about again, summer school. Our summer school is starting June 17th and it is going through July 31st. Registration is currently actively going on right now. Our team is doing a wonderful job at determining if student, if there's a need for, uh, recovery. And we also have some, uh, original credit options as well for students. We will have a commencement, so you can save the date now, but we'll, we'll send out something more formal later. But our commencement will be held Wednesday, August 7th at 6:00 PM here at PNSA. To give an idea of where we are with enrollment so far with, uh, with summer school, we are just, uh, as of today, over a thousand students that have registered for summer school. Uh, that can, just to give you a comparative, so we still have some time before that summer session begins. But last year, we had 950 students enrolled, uh, for the last summer session. So we are over that and we are carefully monitoring the number of students registered and that need of where, what classes and courses they need. Because you will see in, uh, in the personnel report, a number of positions for summer school, uh, this summer. We do have, uh, students registering, registering for AMP, which is that accelerated math program course. That's what AMP stands for. And that accelerated math, uh, program course is that original credit course for math. And then also we have credit recovery as well. It's very important to us that all internal applicants were, uh, were given an interview. So right now at this point, we have as far as applicants for, uh, to teach and help and support for summer school. We had 255 total applicants for all summer school positions applied. So there's a very high need as far as the number of applicants. And there was a total of 188 applicants for certified physicians, that, that's on our, our teacher's side. So we had a number, um, of positions for those certified physicians. And to date, uh, right now, we have conducted over 120 interviews. So very, very large task. I want to especially thank Mr. Valente, uh, Ms. Marino, a number of our security, uh, leads at each building uh, for supporting that effort. So we, we do thank them, we know it's very time consuming, but it is very, very important. We want, uh, best individuals in front of our students. To continue on with our summer school update here, uh, on the communication side. So ensuring that that communication is being pushed out regularly about our summer school programs as well as contacting and letting our foundation schools aware of the different opportunities for them, as well as even our area private schools, um, as well. So registration reminders are going to continue to go out, uh, the rest of this month and, and next month. As a reminder to everyone that who may be listening, uh, if you register prior to May 31st, there is no registration fee for anyone that wants to take summer school. Uh, after May 31st, you can still register and we will continue to take registrations, but that fee will increase to $100 after May 31st. It's very important to us that we can get as many students registered to identify the needs so we make sure that we can identify staff, to make sure that we have teachers in front of those students and make sure that they get properly placed and scheduled. Counselors have been working very closely with our students to identify the need for what courses they, they may need based on, uh, any recovery aspect from semester one courses from those report cards and continuing to regularly monitor current semester two courses as well. We do know that semester two is not ending, the semester isn't ending till, uh, mid-June on June 12th. But counselors are working very closely, uh, with their students and having those conversations to determine if there is a need based on prior years, on a possible failure or a failure from semester one from this school year. We also do have an opportunity for our newcomers as well. Uh, all of our counselors are working closely with Mr. Calleares as well as all of our front o- office staff as well that takes in any, uh, student that is identified as a newcomer and new to this country and making sure that they're aware that there is an opportunity in the summer to help welcome them to our school. Uh, so they have that and there was a prior, uh, board meeting and shared that flyer, but that's also on our district website as well. And then again, Mr. Seals is leading, uh, all the communication effort with our foundation schools as well for our summer band camp opportunity. So that is something that's run, that's always been very successful for our students. Transitioning over from summer school and moving to what we call e-collect. Uh, this e-collect is essentially our online registration for this summer. So last year, if you are a returning student, last year we did all of our registration with paper forms. Uh, we've identified and know the need to move to a, a more updated system. Uh, we are using e-collect and that's part of the system that allows this online registration to occur. Uh, and with this online platform, parents, as long as they have access to the internet from computer, from laptop, from phone, they can complete this registration process. We've also been working very closely with our parent coordinators and they have computers available if there is an internet or device access issue or just an overall difficulty with online registration. Uh, we do have opportunities and our parent coordinators, both Ms. Pedler and Ms. Hobbs, who are wonderful, proviso east and west. And we do have individuals here at proviso math and science, though we don't have a parent coordinator. All of our, uh, office staff is very willing and able to help, uh, with that online registration process. And we have devices available if parents need to come here, uh, to, to do that if they do not have, um, access to that at home. Everything collected, um, as far as student data, whether it be that demographic data or other sensitive information, uh, that can only be seen, uh, by the parent and then those school office individuals that have that access. So it's not open to everyone, it's very confidential. So we just wanted to make sure that that, uh, that parents and families are aware, um, of that. The idea of moving to electronic registration, it minimizes the possibility of human error. Uh, we know that with paper registration, there is that hand put that has to, a, a human individual has to transfer the information from paper onto the computer. Uh, so we have that, the information is easily updated, uh, by future, uh, parents and students. And that information easily rolls over, uh, from, uh, last year and, and from this year to, to next year. So that helps save the parents' time as well as they don't have to re-put, um, information in. That was something that we worked very closely with IT and our IT support to ensure that any student field data that we are asking for, if we have it, it's going to be pre-populated in. So parents will again save time on that aspect as well. Our feeder schools, um, have adopted this, many of them, uh, that utilize Power School. This is going to be a familiar platform for any parents that use Power School at their foundation school and here. So again, some, some familiarity, uh, with that.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
When, when this attempt was made before.
Yes, ma'am.
And it failed. What's the difference with then versus what you're trying to do now?
Yes, ma'am. I, I believe that what you're, that, that failure there, uh, one of the biggest difficulties we had was there was a large number of duplicate students. So that, that was the, the biggest pain point, as I'll, I'll call it, uh, with this online registration. A lot of that, um, had an aspect of training. And we're going to get to a couple of slides here in a minute as far as training and our staff going through and basically approving records and doing that in mass rather than looking to approve those individually, one by one. And our parents coming in, uh, with our online registration, we originally had that, that pre-registered status. Uh, I'm looking over to Mr. Swanson here just to make sure I'm getting the verbiage correct. So we had a pre-registered, um, option, uh, last time we tried this where in that pre-registered option is an open link and parents can essentially start inputting information, their, their student data information. And, but then they can use that same link and enter that information again. And we weren't regularly checking, so parents could continue to go in. We put in a fail state safe this year where we're not utilizing that pre-registered status or that pre-registered option. So in this case, is all of the, a large portion of those duplicates were our new students. So this year, what we're doing for any new student, I think we may have a slide on this later, but for all of our new students, we're asking our. we're asking our families to come into the buildings. And when they come into the buildings, we're going to just ask them for very basic information. So it's going to be your student's first and last name, their date of birth, and their gender. That's the most basic information required to create a student I D. That's our unique identifier that's attached to that student. So once they have that I D, then that parent from the front office staff member is going to be given their password. And that's going to be for that portal. Prior to that, the other system was they can continue to generate multiple unique I D's over and over and over, and that created this duplicate problem. By all accounts, that is not going to happen this year because we've essentially closed that portal to allow parents to continue to go in by themselves to put in that student information and each time generating a new student I D every single time.
So how are you going to control your non-residents? Because we have quite a few non-residents that with this system, something like this, you get folks to get in from the west side of Chicago, both Proviso East and West. It's always been a problem with people that don't live in the community. Again, this will get run into a lot of your problems.
Yes, ma'am.
Those are not. I can walk in a building nicely and look at kids that actually live in the community versus those that don't. And we have no way of tracking that, especially if we're going to enroll online. So if I had with a sophomore last year, really didn't live in the community. So when I go back in to register them to register them for their junior year, what is it that you're looking for different? Nothing? Or is it just move everything over and that's just that?
Part of that residency verification, as I think standard across schools, is the two pieces. Yeah, and you're familiar with what I'm talking about. And they're going to upload that information. It's going to be looked at as it normally would be. Whether that's being truthful, that's one piece. I believe there is an option. There are pieces of technology out there. I think it's called CLEAR. It's something that we have talked about, but there are things that can perform residency checks for us that other districts use. Most recent conversation with Dr. Solomon from Westchester, I had a conversation with him about this, as well as some other foundation superintendents that also utilize this system to help. It is a, from what they've said and recommendation from them, it's a long and arduous process in order to basically call someone out on that and then go through that process to get that student removed. It's very long.
What?
Yeah, you're familiar with it, okay. So these are things that we can look into to help back that. But that will be a further discussion. We would certainly have to look into and bring it to the board as an information item to see if we wanted to go down that road to spend those resources for that.
And the, I heard you mention parent coordinators.
Yes, ma'am.
So they are not responsible for this initiative, right?
No, ma'am. No, well, they are one of the support efforts. But I view it this way, that they're kind of that initial face that the parent may speak to. And that's one of their, their main roles is to help and support parents and be that bridge. So they're kind of centrally located right as they walk into that building as well. All right, and then just an idea about, again, training. So that was one of those ideas about duplicates. That's one of the small little factors. There are five training opportunities for any individual that is possibly, could possibly be involved, whether it's district staff, whether it's administrators, support staff, principals, assistant principals, any individual. So in total, sixty-five people were trained, and we did have those five training opportunities. We also have the recorded video that we can keep referring back to. So it's one consistent message for that training. We're going to continue that training this Friday during our building institute to continue to touch base with those individuals on our procedures to make sure everyone is crystal clear for this upcoming registration, because registration is opening May first. So our school registration here, as of May first, will be open and live. Where parents with access to the parent portal can register their student. It's open as early as May first. And with that, in the next couple slides, we'll talk about this communication effort and what we have planned here. So we've already started that communication piece. This is one of the flyers. It's already been pushed out. We have information on our district website for helping and supporting parents. And the initial communications was just, hey, we need you to make sure that your contact information is correct. Because that's going to be one of the major ways that we are communicating with the email system that we have and the phone numbers that we have available. So we initially started this in February and March, and we're going to be continuing that through all of our remaining newsletters. And talking about our parent coordinators, our helping and supporting that communication effort through their weekly updates, through their newsletters, and working on regular, I think they call it BBCom, emails, texts being sent out to students, parents, families, and staff, regular social media posting and updates, and information posted on our district website as well. So we talked about this idea of new students. So for the new students, what we are asking again, for any student coming to us, again, typically, it's going to be those current eighth grade students. Parents, please visit the school that your student is attending. And you're going to be asked for that most basic information of their first name, last name, date of birth, and gender, so that we can generate a student I D and then get you the proper credentials so that you can begin logging in. But we will always have staff present at our school to help and support this. There's going to be regular status checks as well. So we have the ability to take a look at the number of parents completing those forms and doing those status checks of what has been submitted, what has been approved, what is still pending approval. So those are things that we'll be working together at the district office and at the building level. So weekly, providing that information to the buildings. And then on our end of the district level, making sure that we're checking the checkers, if you will. I'm going to steal a Dr. Williams phrase. But making sure that we're checking that and taking a look at what has been approved and then double-checking their forms to make sure, like the residency checks, that it's not just like we're just clicking through. Again, we won't do that, but we just want to make sure that that accountability piece is there.
Did you guys have anything set up tonight for pirate night for the feeder school that came in at six o'clock this evening to visit the high school?
Honestly, I don't know about parent night. I know that when we, at report card pickup, we had information during report card pickup. Last week on Thursday, we had, we had.
So you guys didn't have anything at Proviso East or?
We did, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I, yeah. I just didn't know off the top of my head. I didn't want to lie and say yes, but.
They had printed copies they were handing out.
Thank you, Ms. Mannenbrook. So yes, Mr. Mannenbrook was speaking. In fact, there, yes, they did have printed copies for individuals attending. Last thing, on the side of registration here, we will have paper forms. So we understand that there may be a barrier with technology. We will have those available. We're not saying that they aren't, but we are discouraging for all intents and purposes, we are using online registration. But we will have them available if need be. All right, on the parent portal side. So as of April seventeenth, we have two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two active parents who have created a Power School parent account. And two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two. We have roughly, I don't have the exact number, but roughly about four thousand five hundred students district-wide. That includes east, west, P M S A, and our auto-district placement students as well. So we've got some work to do. We need to continue pushing this and encourage, encourage and spread this message that we are utilizing online registration. Parents need a parent portal account in order to complete this registration process. So parent account distribution, Power School access, account information to create that Power School parent portal account. And we have all of that information on our district website. And we have individuals at the school to help support to make sure if you do not know how or where those forms are. And we'll be sending out communications soon. As soon as next week, we were finalizing that today. The form is going to be sent out to make sure that parents know what information they need in order to complete registration. So this is a sample letter of what that's going to look like for our parents with the information redacted there. But it's going to be called a Power School personalized accounts sub information letter, where families will receive the information they need about their student and the access I D and password to connect their account to their child. And with that, as far as training aspect, there is an access accounts. Again, that's what's going to be used in real time when a new parent comes in, provides first, last, date of birth, and gender. They get their I D number. Immediately before they leave, they're going to get that access I D and password so they can access the parent portal account. Parents, in order to be complete with registration here, we've got the student enrollment form, our home language survey. Again, that identifies the need for any English language services, our fee waiver or reduction form. Happy to say we've made a lot of efforts on that aspect because that is one thing that we've identified that we believe that we are falsely underperforming the percentage of students that are, that qualify for free and reduced lunch, even though we are a C E P school, if you will. And that, so get to that point, we have a certain percentage of students that qualify for that. But we've put some places, things in place to make sure we're accurately capturing that in all of our health-related forms. So for your consideration tonight, we have three action items around summer school. We also have one information item for summer, and that's related to the summer work hours. So we have had a history of working four days at ten hours a day in the summer. We hadn't done that in the past couple of years. But that is something that we're looking just to inform the board that we will be looking to do. And then the other action items we have discussed. Before I move away from, all this is, kind of concludes all the summer information. I want to see if, again, if there's any questions around summer.
All right. Do you hire, sorry, do you hire two students from, I assume, two primary school?
This is for the, on the I T side?
Yeah.
Yes, and yeah, exactly. I, yeah, in the past, I try to make it as equal as possible. Obviously, it depends on who all applies and everything, but I think in the past, it's been pretty much equal east, west, P M S A, yeah.
So moving from summer and looking now for the actual next school year, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So staffing. We work extremely hard to ensure that everything is accurate as possible. And courses and teachers and F T Es are driven by our student course selections. Our counselors and our administration did a huge task in ensuring that every student they talked to gathered their information, informed them based on their prior classes and what courses they would need. So reported, over ninety percent of students completed that in person, and there was some other work there if it was not done in person. So first and foremost, all of our master scheduling process and our needed number of teachers is driven by our student course selections. You will see a large increase of F T E, those full-time equivalents, if you don't know our wonderful jargon terms. So there's a large increase for full-time equivalents. Some things to consider when you're looking at this large number here. We have a reduction in sixth assignments. So we are doing everything possible to go as neutral as possible on the number of sixth assignments. To give you an idea, currently, right now, instructional courses, we have forty-seven sixth assignments, and then another thirty-five on top of that for all of our special education teachers with that caseload piece with our, with our M O U. So we have a large number of sixth assignments. This puts a lot of stress on our teachers, on our administration, especially if there are instances trying to get that filled internally. We are doing everything we can to minimize that. So we see, again, just a slight uptick because they're trying to go as neutral as possible on sixth assignments. We had a previous action item, knowing the need for our E L support. Initially, it was like language support and the number of teachers to be in compliance for Mr. Calleares. So I believe there was an eleven F T E that the board approved there. So you'll see that reflected there. We also had a special education compliance audit as well. So trying to come up with compliance, and that also affected the number of F T Es. And then lastly, when we were building this schedule last year, we set in Power School, in Power School, we set the number of students based on thirty-four. And this year, we're basing it on thirty, because, and this is kind of getting down the weeds, but reducing that number to thirty by our contractual language. And that's also going to cause the number of sections also to increase there. So there's a number of factors here. This is still an ever-changing number because as we build the master schedule and as we look at what teachers are endorsed in, the number of courses, trying to make sure that this large Rubik's Cube of Tetris play that we have, to make sure, because this number may go down too. But we're trying as a constant move and push, if you will. But we've been building those master schedules and hitting that actual build button we did for P M S A today. And it was a ninety-eight percent success, which is great. There's just a small little movement with P M S A. And then east and west are going to start later this week. Vacancies have all been posted. If you're interested in applying, that is posted on our district website under employment opportunities. So everything is posted. All of our current vacancies are posted today. Before I move away from staffing, any questions here with this?
E L, F T Es are combined in that number of twenty-five.
Yes, ma'am, yes. So, and the numbers, I know it's extremely small, you can't see. But I'll just say that there are just, it's so beautiful Excel magic that a lot of forms talking to each other. Again, anytime anything's changed, that every form kind of talks to each other so we can kind of track this in real time to determine. This isn't going to change much anymore, but this is extremely accurate based on all of the numbers from what we need, again, driven by the student course selections.
So the total number of F T E is three nineteen, is it?
Yes, sir, that is the projected number, yes, sir.
That's total number, that's not anything.
That is the total number that we project that we will need based on, and what we have, I think, this year is two hundred and ninety-four. And we're projecting that we will need three hundred and nineteen for next year.
And these F T Es, how, what are you doing for recruitment? I'm going to speak specifically of African-American teachers.
Yes, ma'am.
What are you doing with that?
Looking to my H R team.
Looking to my, oh, hey.
No, it's a great question. And I'm actually looking to, at our next foundation school superintendent meeting, I'm actually going to look at what resources they've utilized so we can specifically target. Because I'm not sure what we may have used, you know, in the past here. Right now, we just currently beside our own website on K twelve job spot. I still need to look at the resources and how we can target individuals.
And we'll say with this, you will see even some teachers have begun filling out those applications. I think there's a number of asks on personnel report for, to fill some of these vacancies. So I want to take.
Yes, I'm going to try to make this quick because we have still a facilities report. So after, for the past year, we've been utilizing total body wellness and performance for our athletic training services, the D two oh nine. And I think it was May of last year when we contracted. And after conferring with our district athletic director, Mr. Calvin Davis, we would like to continue with a two-year agreement with them, their services. They've been doing a really nice job for D two oh nine. So we are recommending the continuation of partnering with them. And in some of the core areas that we're just looking at targeting is the obviously intervention and care of sport-related injuries, our support during athletic events, development of concussion plan protocols, and support during tournaments on non-school attendance days. So there, you'll see an action item to continue two-year agreement with T D W P. And next up, we will have. And next up, we will have our facilities, we have Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Tonight, we have a few presentations for you, and also a few action items for your consideration, I would like to get started with the design team, I'd like to bring purpose and wheel up at this time.
Good evening, Board. Good to talk to you again here, just have a couple of short updates, as always, please feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions on anything. So as we've presented many times before, as part of our ongoing effort to close out previous work, it will update on punch list status, we have visited the site and confirmed completion of a number of items that were added to list in our most recent punch list inspection, so that's what the table on the left represents. On the right, there are a number of contracts from previous summer's work that are applying for final completion, the process of final completion is that we receive confirmation from Gilbain, that all the punch list items have been addressed, and then we go and visit the site and produce a field observation report, confirming our visual observation of the work completed. And what we have been doing as well is holding periodic owner architect contractor walkthroughs with LT to survey the quality and completeness of the work performed, and any item that is found to either be incomplete or having quality items gets added to the punch list and addressed prior to final completion. Any questions on that? Um, that's just a review, a number of kind of miscellaneous projects that are going concurrently with the overall HVAC work this upcoming summer. The first one is updating the room evacuation signs for Proviso East and Proviso West high schools, as there's been a recent amount of reconfiguration of spaces, of entrances, so form requirement to make sure that the evacuation plans are up to date. And so, once this effort is completed, the evacuation plans that we prepared here for PMSA will be matched at Proviso East and Proviso West. Along the same vein, we are also looking at renumbering the doors, next year, doors at Proviso East and Proviso West, we're aiming to maintain as much of the existing door numbering as possible, but again, as doors have been replaced, infilled, moved around, it's really important as far, part of a first responder effort to be able to say, door 31, door 12, and so having a consistent and logical approach for this will help maintain, maintain the usability.
I have a question actually about this, probably for LT. The renumbering of the doors, I just want to make sure we're communicating with our local police and fire departments and making sure that they're aware of this new schematic, if any doors have changed.
All are on board, for sure, those conversations are ongoing, and also, we wanted to, we collaborated with Gilside to make sure that door number one is properly positioned, because door number six used to be door number one, but they are on board to still allow door number one to be that door, because it is facing Harrison Street.
Okay, that they're all going to have like the schematics and the, the math of everything, just so when we say, you know, we have a problem, we need to do a door eight, like everyone knows we're doing.
Yep, and those safety reference plans will have all those door numbers on it as well, and that's shared with the villages as well.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions on the signage? So the other, another collection of projects that we've talked a few times about before, the soil redistribution and east gym exit stairs, again, just to remind you what this is, is the large dirt pile, south end of Proviso West property, will be redistributed into two berms and then planted, the grade stabilized, and planted with native grass, that included a representative photo of the native drought-tolerant grass that will be planted there, the idea that this would be a low to no maintenance treatment of this area. I do have an estimate here, however, I believe Gilbain will be presenting the actual bids that were received. Similarly, the.
Is that the soil from the parking lot?
Correct.
Wasn't that contaminated?
Uh, there was found to be elevated levels of a naturally occurring compound in there, and based on our talks with the chemist from the soil testing agency, is that there was no evidence of any point source contamination, and in all likelihood, because the soil pile had been out and off-gassing, that may or may not even be in the, in the soil anymore. Yeah, based on their opinion, it was not something that presents a hazard in its current form as it sits there, it, I believe, if I recall correctly, it was something that only congested in mass quantity, it could ever present a problem, but like I said, in all likelihood, it's probably off-gas. This approach was chosen basically because the risk of taking it to a landfill and having, you know, they have what they call a sniffer, basically, if it triggers any portion of soil from a particular site, the entire quantity of soil is rejected, and so this was determined to be the, the most cost-effective approach to treating this, this soil.
Safety-wise, though, what's the, what's the, what's the possible safety concerns or issues? You said you spoke with a chemist.
Right.
Give me state federal compliance regulations, testing, we crossed in all those Ts and dotted all those Is as it relates to, so I remember it was a big deal when we moved in, about the cost of moving in, and then everyone wanted to say, and I think it was even presented to the board, that because of the amount of time that it was in the ground, the oil, the gas, things that it had dealt with, it was contaminated, we needed to get it out of here. Now, except because it sat for a little bit of time, we may be able to plant back into the grounds of the high school.
Yeah, we could provide the report that ECS has prepared, that explains their recommendation, you know, as a, as a new one, as an architect, I can't speak to that level of specificity, but the report from the testing agency can clarify some of that.
Have we picked a place on campus where to plant, where to put?
We have, yes, let me go back here, there, yeah, there are two, oh, sorry, what was that?
Closest sarback is bottom.
It is, we, we've created two berms, so we kind of had a, a, a needle to thread here, we needed to move enough of the soil that we can distribute, distribute around the site so it's not a large pile, but we couldn't disturb so much that we would trigger NWD stormwater management requirements, and so that's where this design that you see here was chosen, there would be a long linear berm created along the southern portion of the site, pulled back about, I believe, 40 feet from the property line, and then there would be another berm created roughly in the area it currently is, but much lower, as that soil gets redistributed.
South to that side, sarback.
That's Roosevelt Road.
I'm sorry, Roosevelt, but I'm, I'm thinking about the tree line.
Yeah, so you know where Fenselane is at, the road, right, right next to Fenselane, and back west will be the long berm.
Got it. Any other questions? The other project ongoing was the replacement of the egress stair out of the east upper gym, if you recall, this was found to have some structural deficiencies and was subsequently demolished and a temporary stair put in place, the ROE approved the use of the temporary stair, with the understanding that the district would construct a permanent egress stair this summer, and so this is the stair that will be going back into place, constructed this summer, and I believe Gilbain will also be presenting big costs on this.
Is that the, that was Proviso East?
Proviso East, correct.
Is that the field house?
No, that is the east upper gym stair from building B.
Got it.
It's kind of in the maintenance court. Okay, and I believe the last miscellaneous project we'll talk about here was, I'm in the district recently released personal to proceed with design on, is the Proviso West gym and field house roof replacement, it's our understanding that the roof, especially over the main gym, has been having leaking issues, as well as the age of that roof is demanding that it be replaced. Since we are in this area performing a roof replacement, it was requested to also design as an alternate scope for replacement of the field house roof, that field house roof currently has a secondary roof put on top of the original roofing system, so tendently our design would call for removing the secondary roof and the primary roof, and coming back with a, a new roofing system, more consistent with what the district has been installing when they've done roof replacements. Gilbain provided an estimated cost of construction for $2.8 million, and we estimate about six weeks from roughly last week as to when documents would be delivered to Gilbain for bidding, and I will let them talk about potential construction schedule for that. Any questions on the roof replacement? The last item I'll just touch on is the Office of Civil Rights Accessibility Review of Proviso East High School, and essentially, this is a courtesy review that the Illinois School Board of Education Office of Civil Rights will periodically do for schools that offer career technical education, to ensure equitable access to these facilities. These recommendations are voluntary and focused on helping the districts provide what is referred to in terms of code compliance, reasonable accommodation for all students, it's understood these are existing facilities that have been around for decades, and they do have accessibility non-compliances, and so this review is to really just help guide the district to see how they can provide most, most accommodation as is reasonable and practical based on the existing facilities. So there were two items that were identified by the OCR report, and personal is providing assistance to the district, and providing documentation and recommendations for methods of reasonable accommodation. First one I'd just like to touch on is the parking stalls at Proviso East, if you recall, all these accessible parking stalls have been constructed within the past four, five years, they were all constructed to new construction accessibility close requirements, and so this is really more an item of documentation and verification. We recently surveyed the as-built conditions of all the parking stalls and found them to be meeting or exceeding compliance, and so we'll be providing a document just demonstrating that. The, the other item that was noted was just to provide some additional site and toilet room signage, identifying banned accessible stalls, and for toilet rooms that are not accessible, just providing signage directing folks to the nearest accessible toilet room, and so we'll just be providing some assistance to LT and his team to provide and install that signage. And any other questions?
They have a question for LT. LT, I remember one time I came here to PMSA and I helped this young lady change her flat tire, and we discussed that we should have signs at every school when an emergency contact they call at our schools for, you know, for a jump or something, assistance, in case the car doesn't start or they got a flat tire and their parents were thinking, how we're doing with that?
Yeah, so we're working with Lugazic Signs, we're going to be presenting at the next facility meeting, a sign that will be solar powered with a URL code developed by our in-house IT department, and we're going to try to come up with some type of number that will work with Ring Central instead of patching out people's cell phone numbers, so that that number will be forwarded to a maintenance professional to assist the student and/or an in-house number inside, maybe to the building principal's office, or whatever that consensus is around where that student call should go.
Okay, great, thank you. Are any other questions for us, otherwise that would conclude our presentation? Thank you.
We're going to bring up Gilbain at this time, we do have about another 75 slides for Gilbain, we're going to try to get through this in the next 50 minutes, so please be patient with us.
Good evening. Probably more like 10 or 12 slides.
I was going to say, yeah. You put it out.
So this is the construction update. We are starting construction earlier at Proviso East this year to ensure that the district can open school, I believe, August 12th, so that's going to do is that's going to have us beginning construction actually in the next couple of weeks. With that being said, there are some cost implications to doing so, some of the items that we are encountering is going to be additional premium time costs, as well as additional temporary construction barriers in doors, and I'll kind of highlight both those items here. On the premium time cost side, we have one trade, so the pipe fitters union requires that if there's any second shift work that's going on, and no first shift that's preceding it, then that second shift is going to be a premium time. As such, we reached out to Autumn Construction, who's the pipe fitting contractor, to find out what their estimated cost of that is going to be, they provided a proposal of $57,000 for that, and that was based on crew of 13 pipe fitters, and that was based on having three weeks of that second shift work. There are efforts and items that we are working on to reduce that cost, number one, they owe contractually Saturdays over the duration of their contract, and obviously, working on second shift, you can no longer work on Saturday, so there will be a credit back for the three Saturdays that they would no longer be able to work. Additionally, we're working with them to potentially have some first shift work that can occur, which will then prevent a premium time cost for the second shift. Again, we are somewhat impacted on the extent of what we can do, because we can't generate noise and things of that nature with classes going on right above us. And then the last item on here is obviously the size of the crew, so they provided the proposal for 13 pipe fitters, if they have 10, nine, whatever that total number is going to be, and we'll be tracking in time of material, will subsequently reduce the total amount associated with that work. The other item that we need to address, obviously with school being occupied above, we need to make sure that we have separations, we have the ability to prevent students and staffs from accessing the construction area during the school day, and at the same time, providing emergency egress to the trade contractors that will be working at night. So what this did is we had to locate six locations that we will be building temporary walls, along with some accessible doors that we will have class and locks to prevent people from going in during the day, and will unlock in the evening. We are carrying a rough order magnitude estimate of $25,000, however, that is subsequently, we did receive the proposal for this, and that's at $15,000 an hour, and again, that will be tracked in time of material. So the one thing I just wanted to point out again, there's added costs, but it's not the drop, directly to the district, as a change or will not be required, because we do have allowances within both contracts to provide the funding for that work. So again, you know, some of the benefits of having those allowances, again, it's part of their contract, and number two, for this work, those contractors when we're pulling from the allowance are not permitted to provide any kind of overhead profit markup, as it is part of their contract. So anybody have any questions on this?
What exactly is this project?
This is the 2024 portion, basically the last piece for the AC over Proviso East, we just got the Level Zero South Side that needs to get completed. A quick cash flow update, this is through March 20th, just want to highlight and recap, the total billing pending forecasted up through December of 2024 is $17,450,000.
What phase is this closed out, or what phase is this good as to?
That, for that 17? That, that's, that's it, that's all and everything.
So that's phase, that's phase two, Mr. Alexander? So that's phase, that's phase two, Mr. Alexander, year number seven. It's a 10-year plan. We have refreshed, we have refreshed the plan, but we're waiting on approval. Once we get approval, the plan will be back at 10 years.
Are we located funding?
No funding, we only identify projects with each building team.
Those 17 million, is it the same 13 million on the audit plus four?
Correct. All the conversations over the last two to three weeks with Dr. Hill and Mr. Provolone.
Yeah, so it's the 13 million, I think that he talked about plus the additional four for a total of 7.5.
That's why you need to transfer, I believe, 12 million, because 38 was transferred last year for a total of 50, 51.
All right, next item is the same costs associated with the security camera upgrade. Total for this was 607,208. We've also identified the bid release 17, which was the work that Perkins Well just identified regarding the soil's redistribution as well as the stair, additional stair work for Proviso East. So these are our estimated costs associated with that. Bid release 17 updated, I think you're gonna have an approval.
Yeah, there's a recommendation.
So we got the recommendation approval coming up. Again, recap, the bid package that will be being presented is concrete work for the stairs. We have some steel work again for the stair canopy, and there's a rooftop unit platform at East. We do have some general trades work also. We did open a bid for sustaining work at the library, however, that's not gonna be presented at this time for recommendation. The estimate, the time for this work was 406,000. Again, we can recap on the approval sheets what that estimate is. Proviso West again is site grading work and that's for the redistribution of the soil stockpile for the two burn locations. And our estimate at that time was 145,000. A quick punch list update for the 2023 work, Proviso West, we're 94% complete. Proviso East, we're 80% complete. Majority of the items that are still open are items that we're gonna have to wait until school's out for the summer just because of the intrusive nature of that work that has to be completed. So these will be getting wrapped up over the summer. Then a quick recap or an update on the fieldhouse, major restoration work. That actually has been completed, it's 100% done. As well as the start of the security camera work, as you've seen, obviously, we're driving in here today. We've got some contractors working on there, putting in the infrastructure for the security cameras on the light poles. They're also just wrapped up the Proviso West light pole infrastructure component. And they're also Proviso East now working on getting some of the inner workings going on inside the spaces for the updated camera work. This is our estimate, again, that was recapped by Perkins and Well, although I think it was about 2.8 million. Sorry, it's a small number to look at here. It's 2.8 million. Just identify the schedule. Because of the extent of the work, this work would not be able to be started and completing, completed until summer of 2025. Just based on timeframe for bidding and then the actual work itself. And then the last item I just wanted to touch and highlight on is Proviso East construction internship. We extended that application period time until next Wednesday, May 1st. Right now, I believe we have one or two applicants. So we will definitely have someone onboard again from Proviso that will get to work and experience the construction. And any other questions?
Yeah, the 2.8 million for 2025, the final phase for the HPAC at East and the others, just East, right?
Yes, that's this one.
That should complete everything that's on the part of the 17 million that we just saw.
Correct.
2.8 million, that's up for approval, but as we discussed earlier, because of the audit, we have to have conversations about that based on a financial framework, correct?
Correct. And after conversations with Dr. Hill and Nick Cavallari, there's $2.8 million in the health and life safety fire protection portion of the budget. And Nick was asking me to have a conversation with Perkins and Well about putting an amendment to the health and life safety work because the roof is considered HLS. And that will provide us funding for the roof with approval from superintendent and board of management.
Will that, will that address the health, life, safety also?
That will address the roofwork of Proviso.
Won't kick it down the road, not kicking the can, it's still gonna be a drop?
It will be addressed if we get the funding, yeah, sure.
Really quick about the internship because that deadline is coming up soon. If we can connect with the principals, LT, or Christie, both, to make sure that we're getting something not just out to the school community but to students directly to make sure that they know that this internship is open.
We've been sharing it for quite some time, just has not been any interest in the last like 90 days.
Yeah.
I get on the phone tomorrow, we do have Proviso East tomorrow at 9:00 AM. So make sure I get in front of Mr. Hall and speak to any and everybody I can because we really wanna take advantage of this. It's been a great program.
Right, no, it is a great program. I know it's been very successful in the past, and I just wanna make sure everyone has a chance to apply who wants to.
What about transportation?
You gotta go down time, right, to your office, or is it here? It's in the construction in the schools?
Oh, yes, construction.
It'll be at East.
They normally go to Gilbain office.
There's events we host to all of our interns, so they get to experience, they get to see other sites around the city and state. Yes, this is the... All right, first action item on here is bid package O3C, which is the concrete work. Our estimate, our estimate for the concrete portion was 58,000. Anger Bogra Incorporated came in at 46,043, so it is our recommendation to award to Anger Bogra. A bid package O5B, Steel Misslance Metalwork, our design estimate was 135,787. Penn Services Incorporated came in at 78,525, is our recommendation to award to Penn Services Incorporated. Bid package O6N, which was the general trades work for Proviso East. We carried an estimate of 55,630. Straw Hard Grade Builders came in at $35,450. It is our recommendation to award to Hard Grade Builders. Then last item on here is for bid package 31J, which is site grading work for Proviso West. Design estimate came in 145,754. Biz Pain Construction came in at $121,000. Again, it is our recommendation to award to Biz Pain Construction.
Would they vet it?
Yeah, we just go through the problem, yep.
Have all of those requests have been funded already? There's money on hand for those bids?
Yeah, so last week, we spoke to Dr. Hill and Mr. Pampel and Mr. Provolone. Funding for the 24 school year is in place for this work.
Yes?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
So next for consideration is Johnson Controls. Johnson Controls is the district partner for fire alarm, fire ancil system in our kitchens. They actually do our inspections in the summer. And we wanted to bring this to you because trying to get Proviso East and Proviso West work on cycle in the summer. Right now, we're doing work at East in June, and we're doing work at PMSA in November. And we wanna cycle this up all in July. So this work will start if approved during the summer of 2024 from JCI related to all of our field devices at Proviso East, Proviso West, also in our kitchens, our kitchen hoods, our sound system, and our head empire panel. This by due shows the totality of the dollar amount per school, math and science roughly 27, 28,000. West around 34, 35,000. Proviso East 52, 53,000, and total of 115,404. The next action item for consideration is the third year for facility research. Nancy Gouran has been supporting FMP for three years in the totality of 117, I'm sorry, 17,361. Her fee is $150 an hour. She will be here roughly two days a week, roughly three to four hours for each visit. This has been a great work in the past years. And the reason why I'm recommending it, because we have a short summer that's about six to seven weeks. Summer school is over at Proviso East and other day-to-day operations are required in order to get the building open. I do believe one or two percent to have Ms. Gouran here over the summer brings a lot of value to making sure that the quality and quantity of work is done in the proper fashion. But Gilbain is also on board as well, but this has been a very successful program in the past. PMSA chillers, Carrier chillers here at PMSA was installed roughly about eight years ago. On our large chiller, we have two more years of warranty. And on our largest chiller here, we have four more years on the warranty. I would prefer for Carrier to do this work because these components are under warranty. I do not prefer someone else to do it. Reason why, if something happens to those units, Carrier will not keep our warranty going. The first year will be 12,827. The second year will be 13,468. And the last year would be roughly $15,000. This is the puncture tubes and also do some work on all the controls on the chillers to ensure that we have a conditioning system here for reheats and also cooling the building. That's all I have unless there's some questions about the action items. Great, okay.
Thank you, that concludes the interim superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We have a few resources to share with you this evening. First, I would like to invite everyone to our combined choir concert that's tomorrow evening at Proviso East. These are the choirs of East, West, and PMSA all combined, all singing together and separately for their schools. It's gonna be an amazing show. I certainly hope everyone shows up to support our students. Also, Thursday night here at PMSA in this auditorium, they are showing Hidden Figures, which is a great movie. If anyone wants to see it, for your kids, it's age appropriate for nearly all ages. So we do invite you up for that. The next thing, I know Mr. Ashop had already covered school registration, so I won't belabor that, but I'm very excited that we're going back online. Thank you for the hard work that's gone into that. And again, summer school registration, I know I talked about this last time, Mr. Ashop talked about it, but it's open now, summer school registration is open now. There are two sessions, it's free, it's one that you sign up before May 31st. And they have a lot of, not just fun, like, or not just credit recovery classes and original course credits, but also fun classes. So there's a freshman connect for all of our incoming freshmen from our foundation schools here to get signed if you kids up. And then we also have our band camp for Mr. Sales, which is gonna be great. We do have a few board committee meetings coming up. Tomorrow, we have our finance committee meeting, it's gonna be here. And then next Monday, we have our policy committee meeting, which is also here at PMSA. And finally, I wanted to bring your attention to a first annual classic car show that will be at Proviso West. There's gonna be cars, food, trophies, rambles, and there's a student component as well to show off our students' skills and talents and what they have going on. So we do invite the community, it's a community event, it's a family-friendly event. So we hope everyone comes out to support this first of its kind event. Mr. Watson? It was, yeah, thank you. So I do wanna take a moment to acknowledge that this is my last scheduled meeting as president. This year was focused on repairing, restoring, and rebuilding. And I do have some things to hand out. So everyone who has helped the district progress this year, I do wanna thank you. There are too many to name individually, but you did your job well. You cared for our students, you welcomed accountability, and you helped push the district forward. So thanks to you for doing that. Sometimes, I know, teaching and supporting teaching and administrating teaching, those can be really thankless jobs. But we see you and we see your efforts and we thank you. Specifically, I do want to give a shout out to Dr. Alexander Brandon, who continues to build our relationship with Training Community College and add more programs for our students and also strengthen and expand our CTE programs. I would like to acknowledge Dr. Watson Hill, who has done a tremendous job. She was really handed a really difficult situation last year, and she has persevered. She has taken chaos and turned it into organization. As I told her in the beginning, dynamite comes in small packages, and I certainly do appreciate all the work that she's done. I know she's put in hours upon hours upon hours, as has her staff, to help get things organized, and I do appreciate that. I would also like to acknowledge our team at West. The world wasn't built in a day, but seeing how things were two years ago when my son started there and seeing how it's been this year has been a world of difference, and it's definitely moving in the right direction. When I went to West in September, four weeks after school had started for Bring Your Parents School Day, a staff member came up to me and said, "Last year at this time, it's 2022, fall '22, the police have been called to West every single day." And by that point in 2023, they hadn't been called once. And I really think that says something about the hard work that your team has put into this and you as well. And it is evident by anyone who talks to you that you leave with love, not just for our students but for staff as well. And you really try to hold everyone up as much as possible, thank you. I do wanna say thank you to Dr. John Mordesiani, Mikiela Soto, and the entire PTU negotiation team on both sides, not just the PTU but on our side as well. I know a lot of hard work has gone into it, and I appreciate it so much. Dr. Mordesiani and I had touched base last summer, knowing that negotiations were coming up. And we didn't talk about terms, of course. We talked about having a common goal, and that was doing what was best for kids. And I think when you start from that place, you get a better result much quicker. Of course, in a negotiation, not everyone gets what they want. But if people give as much as they can with a focus on winning for everyone, you have a good solution. So I'm really heartened by what I think is gonna be a really good outcome. And I thank everyone who has been involved through your hard work. I'd also like to thank Dr. Bessie Carbalis, who is not here. I know she would like to be here. But sometimes life gets in the way. And as much as she loves her students, she's gotta take care of her family. She's a tough cookie, and I noticed that because she's a tough cookie, her husband is as well. And I, you know, I've been giving all my good thoughts and prayers to hope that her husband continues to fight and recover. And our thoughts continue to be with her. So thank you, Dr. Carbalis, I believe over 10 years here in this district, giving your heart and soul to students and staff. So thank you, we appreciate that. While this year has not been without its difficulties, we have accomplished quite a bit. We did at the very beginning set two meetings per month to catch up on business. And it was a tough schedule, especially, you know, for our board who's used to only one. But you guys came and you did it, and I appreciate that. you guys came and you did it, and I appreciate that. We moved citizens comments, public comments, excuse me, back to the front of the meeting. We began settling a long list of grievances. We have a new, coming up, a new twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar that aligns with our foundation schools as much as possible, which is going to make it easier for our families. We helped out staff with a one-time health insurance payment. We saved thirty thousand dollars in CPI training by doing it in-house. We brought in a firm to do an HR audit, we had our finance audit, you heard the good news, you can see the results of that by what Mr. Nick Cavallari had presented tonight. We approved new and more equitable contracts for Erskine Reeves and Miss Roberts Beauty Academy. We increased our hourly rates for our food service workers. We approved, I believe in MOU, with local subsidy fees to increase wages there. We approved a new athletic trainer contract after not having one in place with three years, and it's on, again, a renewal for two years, it's on the agenda for this evening. We increased the daily pay rate for substitute teachers. We accepted grants to provide more social workers for our students. We purchased new equipment for the manufacturing lab at West, we purchased new band equipment for East, along with a bunch of other things to make sure that our students have the resources they need. We pulled over a dozen cases from arbitration, which saved thousands of legal fees. We expanded our partnership with Trenton College to offer more dual college credits, dual enrollment, and dual degrees in many programs, and that will continue as the years go by. We have our shelter construction observation protocol training that's been implemented for our teachers of English language learners. That is huge, it focuses on best practices to support a growing multi-language learner population. In addition to that, as Mr. Ashoff touched on tonight, we have approved, a couple of months ago, we approved more full-time staff to help with our English language learners, which is going to be great, it's going to help get us into compliance. I'm very excited about that. Student scores are on the rise with a fifteen percent growth in reading and seven percent growth in math across the district. We have our weekly school newsletters and a monthly district newsletter that is always, always, always pushing out great news from all three schools and from our district, which is great. It focuses on students, it focuses on teachers, it focuses on opportunities and what we have going on. So if you are not getting our newsletters, whether you're a parent or a community member, I urge you to get on those lists because there are great things happening here. We reinstated the board committee meetings of facilities, finance, policy, parent and community engagement. A lot of work happens in these committee meetings, they are available to the public, and we do invite everyone to attend. We reintroduced college and career counselors at each school, and that's really been pivotal in enhancing students' readiness for post-secondary education and careers. We introduced Paper, which is an on-demand, online tutoring service, it's available twenty-four seven for our students in a variety of languages, and that's been available to help our students no matter what the subject and no matter what the time of day. Again, Dr. Deborah Hill has done an amazing job with the business office, putting policies and procedures in place that we need to really strengthen how we manage our money here in our district. We strengthened ties with our foundation schools and our foundation school superintendents to help improve scheduling, enrollment, and future programming. We approved an increase in full-time security staff. We made a serious investment in our drivers' head classes, and you'll see that tonight when we vote on the personnel report, we are really working hard to get the instructors we need for the behind-the-wheel component, because we have a huge backlog of students who need to take that portion in order to complete the course and get their licenses. We've engaged our unions. We reestablished the VPAC to engage our non-English speaking community members. School enrollment is back online, summer school has been revamped, so we won't run into the problems we had a year or two ago in terms of scheduling students, registering students, and making sure that we have enough staff. And more, and more and more. And thank you to everyone who has supported this work over this past year. It's been a lot, but I definitely see progress and I see movement forward for our students. And I want to touch on our superintendent search, because now it is time for a new superintendent. As many have said up here, it's the most important decision a board can make, and it's not one that we can take lightly. We hired Hazar Young and Ataya Associates to do the search. They had a bunch of community engagement sessions, they developed a leadership profile, they screened and brought to the board a slate of candidates that were best matched with that leadership profile. The board chose to interview six candidates from pool twenty-one, and then further narrowed back down to three finalists. Background checks were completed on all three. The finalists were presented to a community panel for further vetting and to the school's principals and students. In addition to that, they were given a tour of the entire Proviso Township community. Mr. Ashoff, thank you, drove them around to show them different schools and different things that kept going on in our communities, so people could really get a feel for the community they were looking to step into. The board search, of course, was not without its difficulties as well. We had agreed to a confidential search, but candidates were compromised. Two board members did not sign the confidentiality agreement, and that did compromise the recruitment phase. The board also agreed that it would be present for the interviews, and that wasn't the case either. Some attended the interviews, but refused to participate, refused to ask candidates' questions, and refused to ask or answer questions asked of them by the candidates. And I know that we have heard a call for a redo, and this doesn't surprise me in the least, it doesn't surprise me at all, because it's been done before. It's been done before. In January of 2020, Dr. Jesse Rodriguez had announced that he would be leaving our district, and right away, we started the superintendent search. And then, of course, in March, everything shut down, COVID happened, and made interviewing very difficult, interviews had to be done by Zoom. It wasn't an easy process, but we did it. We got down to the final few candidates, and two board members who are no longer here blew it up and said they wanted a redo, and that we had to start from scratch. Dr. Dan Johnson was named as interim superintendent, and we had to start the search all over again. Anyone who's been around in education knows that, for the most part, the hiring process is done, it's done by then, it's definitely done by the summer. People have hired who they want to hire. And Mr. Davis is not here anymore, but when he says that leaders have to admit when they're wrong, I wholeheartedly agree with that. Our prior administrator was in the unanimous decision. And I can always be for myself and say that what happened last time hasn't warmed how I can act at this time, because all you can do is learn from your mistakes. We engaged a firm after interviewing three. I asked repeatedly for board input on several things throughout the process. Some board members are consistent with their responses, and some ignored those calls for input. Some board members wouldn't even talk to the HYA associates to talk about what they wanted in a board or in a superintendent. In many ways, the process was set up to fail by certain board members, by not participating, by not having input, and by making the decision from the get-go that if it couldn't be their person, they didn't want anyone. Our school district has been through a lot, not just in the past few years, but for the past few decades, right? We know this, we know this, we've seen it, we have parents who now have kids here who are talking about how different it is and how things have changed. The communities have changed, you know? I can find people in their sixties and seventies who went to West or, you know, and it was a much different environment. Just because of the times, they had lunch ladies who actually came and cooked from scratch every day, and they would say it's the best meal they've ever had. It's changed. Times have changed, families have changed, communities have changed, technology has changed, but one thing has to remain constant, and is that our students have to come first. They deserve a superintendent who has experience, who has the grit, who has the knowledge, and who truly cares about them as individuals and collectively as our next generation who's going to be leading this country. We need that, I believe we have that. At this point, I'm not sure how this process is going to go, I'm not sure how it's going to end. But I can tell you that the search was done with fidelity, the search was done with transparency, and the search was done with as much input as they could get. When we look at leaders, any leader, principal, school, district, community, classroom, we really need to think about the leaders we want and who we're going to support and encourage and elevate. You know, are there the people who complain and criticize and offer nothing but cruelty and derision? Or are we going to have people who bring vision and a plan and love and leadership? It's not just us up here, it's everyone who touches our kids, we have to be looking for that, that factor that says this person cares and this person's going to make a difference. There's still time to salvage this. There's still time to do what is right. I do believe that political pressure is playing a part in this, I will tell you that, you know, for all the talk that this is a political board or this is a political position, I have never felt more pressure than the day after we decided a direction for a new superintendent. Never in seven years have I felt the political pressure that I am feeling now, to vote a certain way, to do a certain way, to do what people want. And when you're imposing your will over what's best for kids, that's a problem. We have to stay on track, we have to do what we set out to do, and we have to get a superintendent here who is competent and caring and experienced. The leadership profile that HYA came up with meant something, because it came from our community, it came from our students and our teachers and our parents. For any new superintendent to be successful, they have to have board, staff, and community support. They have to. So I really urge my fellow board members to think about this moving forward. Decisions get really easy when the quick hits first. And also, I'm just going to put a bug out there, the first meeting in May, I believe, is when we will be electing new officers up here. I strongly suggest that we do not put anyone in an officer position who is running for reelection. It is a campaign year, and if you're doing the work, it will speak for itself. May I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the April ninth, twenty-twenty-four board Any discussion?
In the minutes, as I stated, I expressed concern about the transparency of this superintendent search. I said then, and I say now, there was inconsistency with the process, there were two candidates treated one way and other candidates treated totally different. A whole week later, the community was not involved, even though they had been invited but had never been called. Each board member were allowed to invite two community members to the last interview. I invited two, Ms. Hickson invited two, Rotten didn't invite any, Sam didn't invite any, but yet and still three others invited as many as they, so trouble. That is not so. Uh-uh. Okay, let me just be. Now, I just, I'll let you speak. There was inconsistency in this process, and with that being said, this process needs to be done over. It has nothing to do with politics. If you're going to do it, do it right, be transparent, that's all I'm asking, and that did not take place. There was a couple of candidates, red carpet was rolled out, one candidate, that did not happen. It didn't happen. That's a fact. And so, for that, I will again say, this process needs to be done over, and I ask this board so that we can move forward. This whole year has been a wash, nothing has happened, nothing.
And... This isn't in the minutes, are you trying to amend the minutes? Are you amending though?
We're talking about inconsistency.
We're talking about the minutes.
No, 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 Ms. Amanda, you had the floor, you preached, I am addressing the fact that, and I will close out with this, the process was not done correctly. I am saying that this process needs to be done over, period.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valziras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution appointing Dr. Deborah Watson-Hill, CSDO, as the district's IMRF authorized agent?
So will. Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valziras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
May I have a motion to approve the contract with Carrier to punch the chiller tubes on both chillers at PMSA annually for three years, as presented by administration? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Valziras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, may I have a motion to approve the Johnson Control Service Agreement, as presented by administration?
So will. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valziras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbanen?
Aye.
Motion carried.
May I have a motion to approve the contract with Nancy Hamel, Governor Lee, DBA Facilities Research, to monitor the implementation of Phase II bid release seventeen...
to monitor the implementation of Phase II bid release 17 projects, as presented by administration? Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes.
For the record, understanding the audit and the monies that we have based upon this, Sam, we should make sure that we stay within our ranges and that we don't be outside the amount of money that's been allocated already. Uh, Mr. Ocampo also, I mean, keep a close eye on this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valteras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbourman? Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the award of bid packages 03C, 05B, 06N, and 3... Oh, sorry, 31J, as presented by administration?
That's not in there.
Is that it? Oh, I'm going off the script. I'm sorry. Sixteen?
What number?
Number sixteen? No, sixteen.
I can read Phase II releases. You just voted on that.
No, we voted on the...
We voted on consistency.
Did you...
Consult the revised board... It's online. It's number sixteen?
Sixteen.
It says Phase II release number seventeen, actually. Is that the only?
It says Phase II release number seventeen.
We just voted on that.
But from the website?
That's the number fifteen on the website is the contract with Facilities Research to monitor the implementation of that. And then this number sixteen is the bid packages that...
It just reads the whole package.
Yeah.
Okay. But this seventeen is just the whole package. Well, she's reading the bid package as cost seventeen and includes all those items.
It's bid package number release seventeen, but not item. It's item sixteen, not our...
Yeah, but it says Phase II release number seventeen. It says nothing about bid packages.
So that's what that is, right?
Okay.
But Phase II release number seventeen has all those bid packages. It's a package, right?
So it's number seventeen in the book, but with number sixteen that we're voting on? I'm confused.
The package itself is number seventeen.
So the bid package is number seventeen.
The bid package is seventeen.
It just costs seventeen. Yeah, but even in the package, where is... Okay, Phase release number two, number seventeen. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Help me out.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valteras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbourman? Aye. Motion carried. Okay, our next action item. May I have a motion to approve the hiring of six student interns at $15 per hour for the 2024 Student Summer IT Internship, as presented by administration?
Item number seventeen is information. It's information only at this point. So we're on eighteen, which is the next voting action.
Yeah, the next action item. Any discussion? Do they want to make the motion? Upset. Second. Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valteras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbourman? Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the 2024 Summer School Standing Addendum, as presented by administration? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson? Absent. Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valteras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbourman? Aye. Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the 2024 Summer Registration Support Plan, as presented by the administration? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson? Absent. Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valteras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbourman? Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Sports Medicine Services Agreement with Toto Bobby Wallace and Performance, Inc., as presented by administration? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson? Absent. Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valteras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbourman? Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Apologies. May I have a motion to approve the rescission of probationary teacher Jack Givens' prior resignation? Yes, this approves the rescindence of the resignation. Discussion? Discussion. We can't yell all the time about teachers being absent and then you don't behold the teachers who stay absent all the time accountable. I support the administration's call on this one. Any other discussion?
Discussion. Then we need to be removing all those 52, 59, 49% that has been absent. If we're moving this man based on 21 absences, he's entitled to five free with any day, you all say we didn't even have a problem. This is for you, right, with attendance? Until we start talking about it more and more and more. And so, I support the teachers. They're the ones in the trenches. And he's willing to stay. We don't know his story. We don't know why he missed 21 days, but I guarantee you, we have several teachers across this district have missed 21 days. So therefore, I support bringing Mr. Givens back. I look at some of the other things that have taken place with administrators and others in this district where nothing has taken place. Nothing happened. And then we start picking on who we are going to move out the way. We cannot put personal feelings into individuals. And again, I support Mr. Givens returning back to his position, as he stated, he would not have resigned in a haste had he known better.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Discussion. I think I mentioned when the board changed about being consistent in our operations and what we do. And, uh, Warpin Patterson, you couldn't have said it more eloquently. We don't get to pick and choose and just haphazardly do things. The information provided to this board for removal was not formal. We don't know if any corrective action was taken. We don't know if any progressive discipline was done. And we understand that this is possibly a non-tenure teacher that that's not required. But if we're going to function with any types of standards, our evaluations this year were just ridiculous based upon the data. There was like someone's line, either the numbers are lying or the evaluators are lying. But they can't both be telling the truth. So while we have an epidemic or an endemic problem, I would think that we'd be slow to release or fire anyone until we can get some things in place to deal with the entire situation and not try to make a martyr or a sacrifice out of just one teacher. If we're going to do it, I agree with Dr. with board member, Dr. Patterson. That was good, but that we should do it across the board. And that we shouldn't be just haphazardly, you know, trying to administer policies that we haven't put in place. And this year, because of the fluctuation in superintendent and administration, haven't been able to really implement or get anything done that's going to be consistent. So I say we start fresh by doing it across the board. See if we have contracts going on. And we start this stuff all fresh, but we don't just haphazardly take potshots. It's been very inconsistent in how we lead our discipline and who gets what on this board this year. And that's just not fair. That's just not fair. We've got administrators and all kinds of things going crazy. And everybody's still walking around with a slap on the wrist. This is this man's livelihood. So I believe that if we're going to do it properly, we're talking about shortages of teachers. I'm a big stickler for teachers coming to work. I don't know why this man missed those days. And I won't haphazardly say that it's because he's a bad teacher without the requisite information. This is America. We don't just fire people without the information and the proper due process. None of which has been done.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Mr. Alexander?
I'm sorry. Let's vote. Let's be honest.
It's to approve.
It's to approve the rescindence of the resignation.
So we want to approve to rescind it, so I don't need to vote? Yeah, yeah. The people don't...
Yeah.
To vote no?
You would vote yes.
What happens if I say?
Then it'll fall on the rest of the board.
There's a motion on the floor, so I can... Can I just like, Amanda, just go into some more discussion and keep us here for 30 more minutes? My answer is the affirmative to keep on, so whatever that is, that's what I hope.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valteras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbourman? Aye. Motion carried. May I have a motion to authorize the appointments, designations, retirements, terminations, and stipend awards as set forth in the April 23, 2024 personnel report, as presented? So... Second. Any discussion? We're on the personnel report. If you're looking online, it would be number 23. And there's two attachments. One's the employee count and the other is the personnel report. So I'm looking online. And the personnel report. All right. Hearing none, please call the roll. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson? Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valteras? Ms. Barbourman? Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Ms. Barbourman, can you please read the FOIA report into record? The following FOIA request was received since the last board meeting from Amaris Rodriguez, April 10, 2024. All incident reports, files, documents, and emails for the past five years for all Proviso High Schools involving students, faculty, teachers, administrators, and parent guardians. Response provided. The second was from Walter Bresky, April 17, 2024. Personnel files, salary, work history, disciplinary records, incident reports, warnings, and termination documents for Stephen Noe, Jamie Harramello Jr., Ashok Emanuel, Shane McNally, Victoria Saratella, and Derek Silvins. And that is in process. Thank you. At this time, can I get a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Please call the roll. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?